Good evening and welcome to the January 5th, 2015 Long Meadows Select Board meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the announcements. Stephen, do you have anything that's come out since the agenda? Any board members have any announcements?
If I can just say one thing, I wanted to just pass on condolences to the Guyney family for the loss of their son Garrett down in the Cape this past week. And I didn't know Garrett, but I know his dad threw football and stuff and his brother was on the team that just went down to Gillette. And I know it's, it never makes sense of anything like that, but I just wanted to pass on our condolences to the family.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Resident comments? No resident comments? Select Board comments?
Just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you see, any comments? Boy, we're one minute in, we're on a roll, actually, only 30 seconds.
I want you to adjourn there.
Town managers' report.
Obviously, I was on the road for the holidays, so not too much. I did send out a couple of items that were supplementary to the packet. I hope everybody got them about the election dates. And then this afternoon, I sent a memo out that relates to the Glen Meadow streets agenda item. But it's a very brief memo, and I can go through that during that part of the agenda. But other than that, it's actually been very quiet for the holidays, which has been a good thing. We had staff meeting today, and everyone agreed that it was really a nice, relaxing holiday season.
That's good. Yeah, I think I asked Stephen if anything had happened, because it's a long period of time, but he said everything was calm, all of holidays, and you know, there's usually something occurs in this large of a workforce.
Yeah.
Apparently, everything was quiet.
I mean, people were at work doing their jobs. I wouldn't say nothing occurred, but nothing noteworthy occurred. It was...
I mean, a lot of travel and all, but there was nothing, so that's good.
That's good.
Is that it, Stephen?
That's all from me.
I had one question. In the mailbox today was this Department of Environmental Protection, this thing on this fuel tank addressed to one of our citizens, and we were CC'd on it. As far as I know, this is just customary CC copy, there's no...
Yeah, I mean, we get copied on all that stuff.
Yeah, there's no involvement whatsoever by us. Okay. I guess I take a motion for approval of minutes from December 1st, 2014, and December 15th, 2014.
How will we approve the December 1st, 2014 meeting minutes as presented?
Second. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay. And now for the December 15th.
I have a bunch of amendments, and I'd like to, corrections, I'd like to propose that we defer those till our next meeting so that we can distribute the corrections. Either that, or we're going to take a while going through them, I'll do whatever you...
No, we can defer, it'll be fine.
And I've got a couple of edits.
Okay.
Shall we send them to Debbie?
Yeah, why don't you send them to Debbie?
Okay.
Okay. Next agenda item, Glen Meadows. Stephen?
Yes, sir. As I mentioned, I did send out a report that I received from town engineer. I think everyone had received a letter some months ago from the residents of Glen Meadow, the condo association, not the retirement community. They're two separate things entirely. In fact, this issue does not relate to the retirement facility at all. But they, that development is built with private roads, and they had requested that the town accept their three private roads as public ways. And we had the engineering department do an analysis of the roads to see if they would, if the private roads met the standards of our public ways. Certainly, we don't want to incur a liability when we are not obligated to do so, which, after reviewing their condo association documents and, you know, the original deeds for the condos, it's clear that the folks that bought the condos understood that they were signing up to be a part of the association. And the association owned the roads, owned the maintenance of them, responsible for trash and plowing and everything else. So the existing condition is as was, as existed at the time they purchased the units. As it says, as it spells out in the memo, because it essentially is, it looks like one parcel, there aren't really individual rights of way laid out on those roads. And so we really can't accept the streets as they exist today. There would need to be substantial survey work. As the town engineer notes, that we don't believe that they could lay out right-of-way to meet the 50-foot minimum, that's our town standard.
Stephen, can you just explain that a little bit more in detail, so that I can understand? What do you mean by it doesn't have individual rights?
Right-of-way. Like, when you look at a town map, you know, you have, and this is what's confusing, you have the roadbed, like the cement, the asphalt, and the sidewalk. The right-of-way is the easement area that the town owns by virtue of an easement across private land, people own to the center line, but we have the easement on top of it. And usually, it's the back a sidewalk, but sometimes it goes a little further than that, especially in areas where there are no sidewalks. And those rights-of-way are, you know, recorded as a part of, you know, as a part of the deed of the property that abuts it. It does not, based on their analysis, they didn't find any, and there are usually metal pins out across town that denote, you know, markers, like survey markers, where there are, rights-of-way are in the field marked out, so you can go with a metal detector and find them. There are none out here. So it essentially is one parcel, and even though they've constructed these roads with water and sewer and everything, they're not, they were not a part of a, they were not included as like a right-of-way. The, we talked about Eastham Road. Eastham Road was built with a private road, but it is laid out in such a way on its site plan that it is intended to be conveyed to the town as a public way, and it meets all the town's standards. These roads weren't built to meet the standards back when they were done.
Could they, you know, I think the first, next question we're going to get asked is, for example, could they pay to survey them and lay them out and do all this kind of stuff? And the big question is, then, with the minimum, whatever the minimum requirements of the town, could they be met? Or is it constructed in such a way that, you know, our minimum right-of-way width is, you know, 85 feet, and the most they could ever get is 55 feet, and therefore, there's no, you know, I think those are the kinds of things that might help them make that decision. Do we have any of that knowledge?
They could certainly do it. You know, I don't, like I said, I, my view is, and it is, they are taxable, so they already pay proper taxes. So I can understand why the owners feel that they aren't getting the services they're paying for through their taxes, but they are getting the services that they're paying for through their condo association fees. There'd be no new tax revenue gained if we accepted the streets. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we accept streets that are not a burden to the town, because it was, like I said, it was a, the folks that bought these units all bought into this arrangement, I'm going to assume knowingly. And the town would incur, you know, I think, a meaningful annual cost if the streets were accepted as, just for, you know, we have an amortized, an annualized, you know, set aside for, you know, maintaining the water, the sewer, the curb, the gutter, you know, all that stuff, plus trash collection and plowing. And it's, you know, it's a meaningful cost each year that the town really is not obligated to take. So, you know, I, I can sympathize with them, but that's, that's the way they bought it. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know that they, it doesn't appear that they can meet the 50-foot right-of-way requirement.
That was the question.
But that's more observed in the field. They may have, because it's just one giant parcel, they may have a surveyor that can go out there and can draw this up to meet it, but that would be something that they would do.
To go back, these folks are asking to be included in plowing and picking up trash
and that type of thing, correct?
They're asking to have us accept their roads.
Okay. And you mentioned this, and I don't know, because I just opened the email, I didn't see it from this afternoon on. And I'm listening to you and trying to read some of this. When this project was completed, their condos, and there were conditions, I'm sure, that they were granted by the planning board, zoning board, whatever, some variances, to put their parcels in without meeting the specifics of 50-foot frontage, and like you're talking about, they don't meet the standard of a road today. But I'm sure that was all approved, knowing that they are on a road and are not receiving town services and that type of thing. So I understand that the folks asked for this, I understand the engineering department went back and looked at it, and it's on the platter, on the plate for discussion tonight, is what are we looking to do with it? That's where, you know, I know Mark is saying, you know, if they go to that next step, but is that what we're looking for to give them direction about what to do, or?
Well, I think because I got you the memo late, and I apologize for that.
No, I'm just, I just want to know, like, what we're looking at.
It really is just a discussion point. I mean, some, they are residents and voters, but they, and so they did make this request, and I think the select board, and this is something Richard, I think, felt strongly about, the select board should give them an answer one way or the other, because they've asked. It doesn't have to be tonight, if you, you know, you want to think about it and get some more information and digest the information from the engineering department. You know, I think the, and we got this a while ago, and truthfully, it's kicked around for a while. I was waiting to get the documents from their attorney that show, because if, by virtue of a planning board decision or something like that, it was said that, you know, the roads will be private for 20 years, and then at the end of 20 years, they'll be a part, there'll be town roads or something like that. There are sometimes agreements that are made, where a town will take roads after a certain period of time. There's no evidence of anything like that in this case. All of the, and we couldn't find, unfortunately, the site plan or the site plan approval documents, all we found was the minutes from the meeting, and there was no reflection of any kind of agreement. Because I wanted to establish, did we say, did the town say it was going to take the roads at some point in time? We have not been able to establish that we did. All of the condo association documents that I saw made it clear that the association owns everything. In fact, the folks that live in these condos don't even receive individual tax bills, the association pays the property taxes. So they're not, I mean, it'd be like living in a, instead of, and I know it's hard to conceive, because they're all little kind of condex units, like they're duplexes, but they look like homes. If it was one building, like an apartment building that had condos, like you'd find in, you know, downtown Boston or something, it'd be a lot easier to conceive of the fact that it's one building owned by the association, everybody just has their little condos in it. But it is essentially, even though there's roads and sewer and everything, it's essentially the same arrangement, based on what I saw.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was listening to what you're telling Mark. I guess I'm still not clear what you mean by the right-of-way and the 50 feet and that kind of thing. Could you just explain what the 50 feet is, from what point to what point?
So, right-of-way is, in some places, like the municipality, or the county, or the federal government will own the right-of-way in fee, I mean, they'll actually own the ground. Here, and in, I think, most places in Massachusetts, it's a permanent easement over the ground that's privately onto the center line. And the right-of-way is basically the, up to a 50, or it can be larger, but, you know, the ideal is a 50-foot strip for residential road that, it's really on paper more than anything, that exists where the town can put in utilities, put in a road, put in sidewalk, plant trees, do maintenance, all of those kinds of things within those, within that right-of-way.
But where exactly, that's what I'm trying to nail. I understand the concept of right-of-way easements, I get that. But what piece of land are we talking about exactly?
The, when you go in Tabor Crossing, Glen Meadow, you go to the right, like if you go to the left, you go to the retirement home, and then you go to the right, it goes down, and it's kind of, they're kind of curvy streets that go down through, I think they're tan buildings, little condos, that's the area we're talking about.
No, but the center, center line of the street's where it starts.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So the 50 feet is from the center line of the street back toward the houses?
Generally speaking, yes. The road, like the roadbed, the asphalt, the road itself, isn't always necessarily in the center of the right-of-way. You know, as a rule of thumb, people use that to measure, but it isn't always in the center of the right-of-way for one reason, or, you know, bad surveying, or they had to move it for drainage or something. But generally speaking, yes.
So, in the memo, it says, "In order for these streets to be accepted as public ways, the proponent should provide a layout that would meet the required minimum right-of-way width of 50 feet." So assuming that it is from the center line of the road out toward the various residential units, what exactly would you envision the proponents, i.e. this condo association, doing to provide a layout that would meet that? I mean, would it require moving buildings? Would it require changing streets? What would that entail?
To do the right-of-way layout, like I said, that's an exercise, a legal exercise. It's on paper.
Okay.
They could, in theory, if the select board permitted it, they could keep the road the way it is, but they would need to establish that right-of-way, which was obviously going to be wider than the road. Most of our rights-of-way are much wider than the actual streets.
Yeah.
And so they would, so establishing a right-of-way boundaries is a paper exercise, not a construction exercise.
Okay.
If we, if the board said, made the condition that we wanted the road to be 40 feet wide to accommodate two parking lanes and two travel lanes, that would be something that would may then involve some construction activity. But just establishing the right-of-way is just a survey thing.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, my, and Stephen's right, I guess I have a little different feelings on this, because they did come to us as the town and ask, they asked for us to take their roads, which is not out of the question. Anybody in their right mind would want that to happen if they could. And asked for what provision should take place for this to happen. And I don't think, that's what, I don't think we've, we've got back with the people and said, okay, here's what you need, a survey, you need established right-of-way, or whatever. And I think that's fair and reasonable, because we can accept the maintenance on these roads without them being accepted highways. There is provisions in the law to do this, boards are allowed to do this, select boards are allowed to do this. There's been cases, I think, of even having this down, where there's private ways that we plow snow on. So this is not the first time it's ever been talked about, and this one here is a little odd situation, because it's a condo complex. I happen to have knowledge on what it costs them for snow removal down there for one year, and I think, I'm not even going to put the figure out on TV, but it's shocking. It's absolutely...
Meaning, as in high?
It is shocking how much it costs for them privately to have that done. And if these costs are even close to being reflective, I mean, this establishment here would be just well off to write us a check every year and let us do these services for them. Seriously. And I'd like to be their agent, having that take place for a commission. I mean, the costs are that absorbent that are being hit on them. So I think what they've done, they've come forward as a reasonable expectation, a reasonable request, and I think we should follow through and get back on and say, okay, this is what you failed to do the right-of-way. And I agree, you have to have established right-of-way to accept the streets. But we don't have enough information now to make an honest decision by a board, if it's within our power to accept streets for this type of maintenance. I think we'd need more information. I don't know if the board feels that way or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a couple of things. One is, this is a condo association, and because, and again, I'm just reading through this, I remember the letter, but all we did was really have a letter, and we were made aware that they wanted us to look at it. I don't have any problems, and I agree with Richard, if there's something that we think that they should do to get these roads to be in a position to be accepted, but, you know, we had Dunn Road down at the, we had no water lines in there, we had wells, and the town voted at a town meeting to accept those roads, to become paved and put water, water lines in there, because the wells were being condemned for the homeowners. But I don't know how that's different than this, where the board would take it on versus town meeting, for example. And I think the board passed it out to town meeting, formally, the warrant article. And I don't know if that's the proper channel to get that approved, but the questions I have are this, is that I don't have a problem with going to these folks and saying, here's what you need to do to potentially become accepted by the town. And so I would want to know, is A, does that mean it has to go through town meeting, or is, as Rich said, can the board accept it? And B, through town meeting. And secondly, is what's the precedent of a town taking over maintenance functions of a condo association? Because I think that's what separates this from a private way, because the private way is just a road that hasn't been accepted by the town. It's not a condo, each individual homeowner's paying their taxes. And the difference, I mean, what seems to me is a condo association is just that, it's an association that takes care of all the maintenance and you get your bill. So I just, that would be my, the other question is, what's the precedent of the town taking over roads from a condo association versus just a private, a private way, like even like Dunn Road, or, and Dunn Road, I don't think is private, but...
It still is private. Because they, it's the same situation, the residents of Dunn Road, the proponents were supposed to develop a right-of-way plan, and I don't think that's ever been done.
And I think, I agree with you, Paul. It's fairly straightforward, but I think we need to know, is it possible to have that road legal? And we don't know that at this point, we don't know.
I agree with that. I think that...
Yeah, I mean, it would be, they would have to, I think it's on the residents to prove it, and I don't mean to be kind of a Grinch on this, but because it's already fully taxable, it's essentially a net service cut to the rest of the town if we did this, because it's the time spent, and I mean, not the, not necessarily the, well, yeah, the refuse and recycling would be, would go, increased tonnage, not much, but increased tonnage, and now we would pay that out of the general fund. And then the time spent plowing and servicing the water mains and everything else would be time not spent on others. And, you know, like you said, it's clear that the folks knew, or should have known what they were buying. And, you know, Richard's right, I mean, I can understand completely why they'd want to try this. I certainly, if I was a resident, would want to try too. But if we accept the roads, is that dissolve the condo association? And do those individual units then essentially become taxable as single-family homes, and what would do to the overall, you know, as an association, it may be, it may have, if you take each of those units and tax them as a freestanding single-family home, if we play this string out a little bit, doesn't the bill overall collectively go up? Because there's some, because they're an association, it's not the sum of these individual homes. And I don't know, I mean, I'm kind of speculating here, but these are all questions that would be answered, but the threshold that we have to cross is, can they achieve the right-of-way layout that would be needed to accept it? So I think, you know, we just wanted to, you know, we're reporting this back, because we did, we did spend some time looking into this, it took longer than we had hoped, but it was, part of that was kind of back and forth between myself and the attorney's office.
Which, our attorney or theirs?
Theirs, the requster.
Okay. I mean, it seemed unlikely, I can't even imagine how us accepting the roads would alter the ownership structure of the condo association. I mean, they would have to, you know, completely rework, you know, the property rights among the condo owners. I mean, it seems like that's a separate question.
But I mean, but the documents are clear, that the association owns the roads, maintenance, everything. I mean, I don't know how that all, I mean, you're right, we have to start spending some legal fee on this on our own end. But again, I think, I think the report is right. The next step to me would be go back to them, and if they want to go through the expense of trying to lay out the right-of-way as the next step. But I guess if the board, in principle, just simply didn't, if there was, if there was a consensus that the board, in principle, really didn't want to accept the roads because we weren't obligated to do so, and incur what, like I said, what I am saying is a net service cut to everybody else, then I don't think it would be fair to go back and ask them to incur the expense of laying out the right-of-way if the board really isn't open to doing it to begin with.
Well, it's not really fair to imply there'd be a service cut to everybody else, though. It's not a fair assumption. It sounds good, and it plays good, but it's not a fair assumption, because with the amount of money that was transmitted to us on these, I don't think the average citizen would have any idea that anything had taken place. Yes, Marie? Sounds good, though.
Yeah, and I didn't challenge the engineer's numbers. They seem low to me, but, you know, I defer.
I guess the two questions I would have is, one, what are the bylaw violations that are existing there? Like, you sort of mentioned one, where they would no longer be able to park in the street. So I think they have to realize that if we do accept it, there are certain bylaws that would now be enforced. And then the other thing is, before I would take it, I'd be concerned, what are the conditions of the sewer and the water lines? Were they properly placed?
They're all fairly new, Marie.
Yeah, but were they done correctly, or are we blind into something that was...
It was all code inspected when it was put in.
Yeah, I mean, they did that, and this is a relatively new development, and so the infrastructure's in there, and that's something that the town engineer didn't look at. The infrastructure's in there, it's not in bad condition.
No.
But, you know, it's not all, it's not all paved with gold once it becomes a public way either.
All right.
Thank you.
Literally.
Yeah, literally.
So I guess that, I guess what I would say is, if the, I don't know if we want to take a sense of the board, or whether or not we should move forward on this, but I mean, I just feel, Richard, if we're going to tell them that they should do X, Y, and Z as a next step, I don't want to do that if we're not into it.
Well, I guess if we said, the board is empowered to accept the maintenance of these roads if we so choose, whether they're legal or not. So it comes back to the board to make that decision, and I think, I don't think there's enough information available for the board to make that decision right now. At least, I'd feel, I'd want to feel comfortable, number one, can the roads be made legal? Or is there a situation where they cannot be made legal? I think we need to have that information, Stephen. That should be pretty simple. I mean, basically, their, their own condo association may even have in the deeds laid out on where the right-of-ways are. I mean, they...
But they don't. And the point is, they don't, and they'll have to hire a surveyor and possibly an attorney to do that layout, and it's going to cost the association...
For somebody with a 50-foot rule?
Yeah, but you still got to, you still got to draft, you still got to...
Well, I understand.
Put it on mylar.
Yeah, you would have, you would have to make the official presentation, but that's not a major cost getting up to this. What do you, what's the board feel? I think, I think we need more information before we just blindly make a call on this.
Well, I think that's pretty obvious. I mean, we got an email, you know, some of us are just sort of digesting this information as we sit here. So, to me, I feel like we're some distance from making a big decision like that. Yes, sir.
My take on this is that we need to decide internally whether this is a financial decision we're making, or a services decision to an organization that's paying taxes for other things. And if we decide that it's a financial decision, then we make the decision based on finances, saying that, you know, we think it's going to cost X dollars, as best we can tell, to provide services 1, 2, and 3, and therefore, we're willing to do that for a charge of maybe X, maybe Y dollars, and provide services 1, 2, 3. On the other hand, if it's a, if it's a service we're providing to organizations, or to a condo association, but to people who live in the town, then we should make that decision based on that basis. And my personal opinion is that, that there ought to be a combination of the two, and we ought to say, look, if, and I didn't see the numbers you have for snow plowing, but, you know, if they're paying X dollars for snow plowing, and we think we can do it for something less than X, maybe we say, look, we'll extend to you the option of paying the town so much a year, and we'll just add that to our snow plowing services, recognizing that, yeah, it does cost us money, well, but...
It doesn't really work that way, Mark.
What?
It doesn't really work that way for the, I mean, we don't charge on a per-street basis for snow plowing, it's...
Good for private roads.
It's to some extent, fixed cost, other than overtime.
But, so how do we come up with a presumed cost?
It was a guesstimate.
Right.
They still had an amount of time to add to the route, and, but if we have a, we have a winter like we've had so far, and it's pretty mild, then it could be that number. If we have a winter like we had a couple of years ago, when it was a lot of snow, it could be triple that amount. I mean, just, a contractor can give you a number to do your driveway, or do these roads all year. We have our street crew, we don't outsource our plowing, so we have our street crew that's on, that's a some cost, if they're not plowing, they're doing other stuff. And so that's where it's hard to say, you know, Glen Meadow, give us this amount of money every year with your snow plowing, that it may not be reflective of our actual cost.
Okay, could, yes?
I like the idea of thinking out of the box a bit, and seeing, because I think if we do take over the streets, I don't think they're going to be very happy when we say you can no longer park in the street. These are the tree belts, you can't plant in the tree belt.
We're putting in speed bumps.
Yeah, you know, we start putting in...
We might.
We might.
So whatever we decide to do, so I think they, I think sitting down and saying, "What exactly are you looking for, and what are we willing to work with?" Because if we have to start hiring attorneys to decide what we do with it, I'm not sure if either side's going to be too happy with that. So maybe we should just find out, break it down and say, "What are the problems? What are you really looking at?" Because that's why I said, "Find out the list of bylaws. Let them know if we do take it on, what would be the result, which they might not be happy with some of the things that we're demanding." I'd like Mark's idea of looking a little bit, and maybe sitting down and talking to him again. But I also have a question. Paul's ideas, I'd like to know what the process is. Do we say we're interested, but then it has to go on a warrant? Because this is a big decision, and...
I believe it does.
It would, I mean, ultimately, yeah, it would be the same thing...
Even if we approve it, I believe it has to go to the warrant.
Ask the planning board, and have a hearing, and make a recommendation to accept this. And again, they would have to spend thousands of dollars on surveying and legal descriptions to get to that point, and that's, that's the process, and that's what we're saying, that they would have to spend money on this. And, and that's fine, I mean, I think it's a reasonable next step, but my point was, and I'm, to some extent, repeating myself, if the board in principle didn't want to accept the streets and accept the additional cost for no additional revenue, then I just didn't think it would be reasonable to tell those folks, "Start spending money on surveying legal to get to the next step." But what I'm hearing is the board is open to considering it, and so a next, or we can hold off and talk about it again at the next meeting, because you did get the information late. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're doing.
Well, and there's another point you brought up, was, I was unaware, because I've been part of an HOA, and the HOA did not pay my taxes, but the HOA plowed the road. I paid my own taxes, and they did the garbage pickup and all that stuff. And, of course, HOA's a little different to condo association, but I was unaware that the condo association, in fact, was paying all the taxes.
It's one bill.
So they're billing, they're prorating the billing to each individual condo owners. The condo owners are paying their own taxes, they're just paying it through fees.
Through a fee.
Through a fee.
But I think it's, but each, each unit, I don't think, is assessed separately.
Well, that would be interesting to find out, because there could be a tax incentive to our town to accept this too, that we're unaware of at this point. And we don't have a lot, that's, that is the information we don't have to make a rational decision on it. So we've got some comments here, and I, how about you, if we, yes, sir?
One point that I'd be interested in knowing, which I think would be helpful for all of us, I mean, it seems like this sort of thing doesn't happen very often. And one precedent that I'm just thinking of is, is maybe having been analogous, but I have no personal memory of it, because I haven't lived in town long enough, is Emerson Road, I mean, that's a condo association. What is our, isn't that...
It's a tax-exempt Emerson Road.
Those are apartments.
Okay, but it, but isn't it kind of a similar idea? I mean, like, if we're talking about apartments, you're talking about, but one entity owns it. So what's our relationship with that entity?
They own all their roads inside that.
Okay.
Once you get it, once you come in off of Emerson Road, it's all private property.
All right, and they do their own plowing?
The one, the only precedent that I'm aware of, when I discussed this with the DPW, was we do, we did run the water lines down Dunn Road, but now those people are now water utility customers, so we get, and we get water, we get paid by them for the use of the water. They also, we also plow those streets. To some extent, you know, Dunn Road is the access to our town facility that we use for leave, so there's a bit of a trade-off there, and there's also public safety considerations. But those are freestanding, individually-built, single-family homes, and so there's not a straight apples-to-apples precedent. I wish there were. It'd be, this would be, then I could come forward with a recommendation, say, "Here's, we've done this here, we should do this here." There's no real, there's no real analogous thing, and that's where, again, if the board wants to, I didn't expect an action on this tonight, anyway. I just wanted, I just wanted to get up and put it back on the radar screen for another meeting, but just to let the folks of Glenn Meadow know that we hadn't forgotten about them. But again, it's just, like I said, you know, I'll share my view, and Richard and I disagree on this. My view is, we aren't obligated to do it, and therefore, I don't agree, I don't think we should. If, if a majority of the board felt the way I felt, then it could rest there. Again, I'm not getting that message, so we should then take the next steps and proceed, and let them know what they need to do. But the next, but the next threshold should be, if there's one recommendation we should be adhering to, it's if they can't meet the right-of-way requirements, that should be a threshold that the, that the board should...
That was a good attempt at a hostile takeover, though.
Hostile takeover.
Yeah, that was a real good attempt.
Can I?
We, yeah.
I just, one thing, I think the process has been reversed here. Because I don't think it's incumbent upon the board to say, and I don't have a problem considering a private way for the, for the town to take over a private way, but I don't think it's incumbent upon the board to say, "We will entertain accepting your roads if you do X, Y, and Z." I think if anybody is to come before the board to say, "Would you accept these roads?" I would hope that they've already gone through the process of saying, "We've done our surveying, we were able to split it up this way." Go to the planning board and say, "Okay, here's a variance from, you know, them in the zone of Board of Appeals." I would hope that that process was even, was started before we would entertain it, because I think we're, I, they won't, they won't be our streets unless the condo association gives up rights to that, which then makes it not a condo association any longer.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I, I mean, I'm just, but again, I would think that it's not incumbent upon us to say, "Are we willing to accept this if they go through X, Y, and Z before they spend the money?" I think it's really incumbent upon the homeowners to present it, whether, because we don't even know if they can split off from the condo association for the street, for the town to take ownership of. So I think all those things need to be vetted out before we consider ourselves, consider it as a potential takeover, or taken over as a town road. And again, I don't have a problem entertaining that, but I think the cart's not even attached to the horse right now. There is no horse, and I, and I think it's, I think it would be bad precedent for us to say, "We'll be willing to entertain it," then go spend thousands of dollars, and then have it denied. Where if they really want to have it considered, that should have already been done before it was presented to us, other than just a letter. That's just my feeling. I, I'm with you in the sense that there isn't an obligation, and I don't think, I mean, consideration is one thing, an obligation to do it, and I just wouldn't put it on the board to say, "If we're going to go, if we're going to say to them, 'Yes, we'll consider it,' okay, now," because there's the, I think there's an expectation, then if we're going to say, "We'll consider it," and they're going to spend tens of thousands of dollars, or whatever their amount is, there's a, an expectation that it's going to be taken over. And we don't even know legally if we can do that.
Yeah, the board doesn't, I mean, the board doesn't, the board can endorse it and refer it to the planning board. They can go to the planning board directly, and then it ends up a town meeting warrant. It was more, truthfully, because this doesn't happen very often, this is another thing. You guys received, we received the communication, so it was more, "Here's the answer to their request."
Yep.
And their letter was specific. It wasn't, "Come plow our streets and take our garbage." It was, "Accept our private streets as public ways, and we just seek to provide them with a, not a short-term answer, but the answer for now." And the reason why it took so long, quite honestly, is we were trying to research and establish, was there a right-of-way? Had that process that you, that we talked about, had that already been done some years ago as a part of site planning? And we just couldn't find that it was.
We brought up some points that I'm going to be sharing with Stephen, even though we don't agree on this. We really do agree on what we're letting on.
If there's any other questions come up in the next couple of days, would you please get them to me? Because I'd like to, I'd like to get this, this thing brought to resolution and answered. It's been, it's been in our hands since the end of August. I think it's time that we, we put an answer out. So we'll go ahead and we'll pass the discussion on this, but I've written down the notes on some of the stuff. Paul, your points are taken, except for the fact, Paul, they did basically said, "Let us know if there's any other information required." Because they're not inside of our form of government, they don't know what the right-of-ways are and what our requirements are.
And that's what we're going to do, is let them know.
Right. And that basically, that's basically why they haven't come back to us on. Now, the condos, condos will still be condos regardless of who owns that road. There's condos all over the world that are on private, or public roads, so the road ownership doesn't have any bearing on whether it's condos or whether it's single-family, unless there's some mild stipulation in Massachusetts, but I doubt if there is, because you can have, because major condo complexes are built with the, with the notification that they build the streets to the standards of the state, and the state takes over maintenance as soon as they're finished. It's pretty standard.
But under their docks, I haven't looked at them in a little bit, but I'm pretty sure those are not, they're common areas. So the road, the roads that they have are common areas, just like, like I said, if this was a single building with 30 condo units in it, it's easier to conceive of than the way it's laid out now, but it's essentially the same. The hallways are common areas, the elevator shafts are common areas.
And that's getting back to what Marie said, that there's going to have to be an adjustment to their condo, or their agreements with their owners, too, depending on which way we go on this. So anyway, we're going to move forward. Get us some more, yes, sir?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think the response ought to be, in order for us to consider this further, the following information needs to be provided, the following data would have to be supplied to the town, including everything from a layout that shows rights of ways, and a, you know, a recognition of what the changes would be that you have to, as Marie said, change, adopt the bylaws, changes to, you know, to be complying in the roadways and that kind of thing.
It has to be in there, because they're going to have to be made aware, they're going to be, once they fall under our ownership, if they do, they fall under all the bylaws of the town. So, okay. I saw Steve was just out there with his architect.
I can run out and grab a drink.
Yeah, why don't you? And we'll go ahead and get that out of the way now.
Is this...
We failed to put it on there, Alex.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, he was, he was scheduled to come in, and I told Stephen, and Stephen told me, and then we failed to put it on the agenda, so we'll both plead guilty to that.
I mean, can we do it, since it's not on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
If there's no vote, well...
Yeah, there's no vote, well.
I was wondering, I have a need to all the boards, if you'd like me to present off that, or I can present on the screen, whatever's easiest for you folks, or...
What's your flavor?
I don't care, I think whatever shows on TV better.
Yeah, I like you whatever shows best on TV.
Probably be the...
The screen, I think.
Okay. You got your apple?
I do.
Okay.
I do. We're getting that fired up. I think you remember how to begin there, don't you?
Well, I think I do.
We're going to find out, I guess. Once it fires up, I'll try.
This is part of the thing, just the return, that has the proposal. When is your meeting with the planning committee?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Yeah, I think Paul, you asked us to come back, to review their plans, how they've changed since July.
Steve, just as a comment, you know, there's a lot of people, and I don't run into a lot of people that I get to talk to, but the one question that has come up every time I talk to somebody, I'm not like you guys been all your life. People don't search me out, unless they want me to do something for them. There's a lot of confusion over the parking, and, and I keep telling people, "It's all been redesigned," but is this publicly displayed anyplace at the Plaza's?
It is, it's on our website, that you can see.
Okay.
Jeez. That was God talking to us.
What was that, Dave?
Wow.
It was torqued off.
Okay.
He asked you to set the mics. He wants you guys by the mics.
Oh, can't find the mic, okay.
Okay, he wants us by the mics.
Okay. I tell you what, the way that come across, I would say, "Yes, sir."
Yeah, so, so Richard, yeah, we have a, we have a website, thelongmeadowshops.com, and you go in there, and it does show the layout of the parking lot, and Matt will show that presentation this evening, too.
Okay, because that seems to be the question you keep getting, because the traffic concerns.
Yes.
In a way, and I know you have redesigned the parking lot, and you've given them what, an extra 30, 130 spots or something.
139 spaces, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. If you can get your thing to light up, you've got it.
Yeah, you know what, I'm not getting A03.
Oh, you got A815, so when you want?
That's what I'm not getting, of course.
Didn't get it up as an option?
First of all, I'm connected to A03, which, whoa, there we go. Hang on a second. There it is.
Okay.
Mirroring, beautiful, let's turn that on.
There you went.
Excellent, thank you very much. Just let me know when you're ready, Matt.
Yeah, I wonder if I should move, because Dave can get a view on the screen if I...
He's starting something, Paul.
Go ahead.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, good. Yeah, good evening, Steve Walker from the Long Meadow Shops. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Just briefly, we've owned the shopping center for over 20 years. It's really been a second home to me over the past 20 years, as my office is right above United Bank. So it's kind of like I've got two boys, and the Long Meadow Shops is my daughter, Glenn, honestly. So more than that, we really love being part of this community. We've been involved in this community for 20 years. We've been giving back to this community, supporting groups and organizations that make this town special. And we're very proud of our track record over the past 20 years, as a strong community partner, a responsible owner, and a good neighbor. So this is the first proposal that we brought in front of you in 20 years here. And for the past seven months, we've met with town officials, the planning board, our neighbors, we knocked on doors to solicit feedback, and then we finalized a plan that we felt was sensible in size and scope, and we really feel is a win-win for the customers along Meadow Shops, the retailers, and the town along Meadow. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt Whitmar here from Phase Zero Design, and he'll walk you through the plan. Matt?
Thanks, Steve, appreciate that. So I've had the opportunity to present before, but realizing this is a new proposal, and start at the beginning and walk through some of the plans, I have a couple of slides to show, and they're included in your handout as well. The shops in Long Meadow, as you know, is a lifestyle center, which really is a cluster of mom-and-pop-style stores, as well as national brands, that create a centralized shopping area with a strong mix of retail and restaurant. Grove Properties purchased the project, the property about 20 years ago, and during that time, has been working hard to reinvigorate and improve the shops. The results has created a popular destination shopping experience, and Grove has been fortunate in getting top-quality tenants such as Starbucks, Gap, Max Burger, which complement the existing tenants and strengthen the tenant mix. Now, recently, a number of leading national brands, similar in quality to that of Pottery Barn, Williams-Sonoma, approached Grove Properties with a desire to be in western Massachusetts, and specifically in the Long Meadow area. The issue, however, is there's not space within the center to accommodate these tenants. Grove Properties realized that if not did something proactively at these shops, then some other developer may decide to create a similar property or lifestyle center around these national brands, say in western Springfield or in Agawam. It's a scenario that plays out all too often in the retail arena, and the impact of losing tenants could be devastating to the shops. Such actions negatively impact the important tenant mix, as well as greatly affect the overall shopping experience. So this project began as an effort to find more retail space within the existing shops, and quickly morphed into an opportunity to reposition tenants, correct the shop's access and parking issues, and improve pedestrian safety. Now regardless of which option we looked at, each one had one element in common, and that was a need to expand the site to accommodate these improvements. The area to the east of the shops, between the shops and the First Church of Christ, which is this area right here, is approximately 1.82 acres, which is currently zoned A1 residential. To address these improvements, the shops is requesting formally that this 1.82-acre parcel be rezoned to business. The proposal before you this evening is in its simplest form, a zone change request. However, there is also a strong desire on the part of Grove Properties to show what improvements they anticipate. The plans are a work in progress, just as a zone change request is only the first step in the process that we're undertaking. Grove Properties fully anticipates a lengthy review ahead, which would include traffic studies, drainage studies, and incorporate comments and input from the town and the various boards and committees at overseas site review and building design. Now, you can see the site, and I'll go through very quickly here, the site itself actually lends itself quite well to being a business zone. It actually has a buffer in the back that's currently landscaped. What you don't see here is there's actually a rise of about 20 feet in elevation, and then comes back down about 20 feet again behind these homes, so it actually creates a natural barrier through the topography itself of the site. Our intentions are to landscape this space with a fence, an additional buffering of landscaping to create a strong landscape buffer, and you can also see that there's a significant amount of green space in between the property line of the shops and the First Church of Christ over here to the east in their parking area. Now, some of the most significant improvements of the current design, and I've got the existing site plan up on the screen right now, are some of the improvements to what we call the dead-end parking, and that's these areas that you see along here. These areas have the opportunity for a vehicle to come in searching for space, get to the end and find out the spaces are taken, and then having to back out again before they can join the traffic and get to another parking area. This is disruptive, it causes a lot of backup forward movements, and is a difficult space to navigate. The proposal looks at completely changing these parking areas and eliminating those dead-end moves. Ultimately, it creates a more linear intuitive parking arrangement. Additionally, the main area Bliss, the main entrance rather, off of Bliss, right here that you can see, we've looked to enlarge that and create a dedicated left-turn and right-turn lane for traffic, so that traffic waiting upon entering has a place to sit here while making a left turn without backing up right-turn traffic and allowing that to continue through and navigating the site. We've also looked to enlarge the entrances off of Bliss in this area and this area, and we've eliminated the parking that actually is accessed off the entry drives, that you can see in the existing plan here, let's see, right here and right here, which actually allows vehicles to have to back up out of parking spaces into oncoming traffic as they enter the site. So the proposal now includes eliminating that by creating a barrier here, and a barrier on either side here, that doesn't allow the traffic to intersect with the access lanes that are coming into the site. Additional parking spaces have been provided throughout the complex as well, for a total gain of 139 spaces, and spaces provided on the west end to accommodate the farmer's market, as well as the parents that are parking here to access the athletic fields. I'll also add that this achieves 100% compliance with the town parking requirements, whereas the existing parking situation achieves only 93% compliance. Now, to allow for these improvements, we anticipate relocating CVS to a larger store footprint and providing the store with a drive-through pharmacy, and I'll highlight that. There's actually a new slipway off of William Street, vehicles come around here, the pharmacy is in the back, and they're able to circulate out and through the site. Now, CVS is a destination retailer, and a significant amount of traffic enters the center just to shop at CVS. By relocating CVS to the eastern portion of the site and providing a dedicated entrance from William Street, the short in-and-out trip traffic no longer interferes with the access and parking within the center. A dedicated parking field is also provided in front of CVS, and the entrance from William Street aligns directly with the new drive-through, allowing much better circulation through this end of the site and being able to access the drive-through. These changes are supported by CVS Corporate, and also supports the needs of mothers with children, the elderly, and helps in eliminating the spread of disease by providing sick individuals an opportunity to obtain prescriptions without having to enter the store itself. Historic data also shows that at least 25% of shoppers will use a drive-through rather than park and enter the store, which also tends to free up a lot of the available parking in this area, as about 25% of users are now going to be going through the drive-through, which wasn't available to them in the past. We've also looked at some improvements for pedestrian safety, and these include additional sidewalk space, better signage for wayfinding, more bike racks and benches, and more pedestrian crosswalks located throughout the complex. These crosswalks include striped crosswalks on the pavement, as well as a series of raised crosswalks located in areas where vehicles are turning, such as in this area or in this area here, as well as at each of the shop's main entrances. So that would be here, here, at this entrance, and at the new entrance off of William Street. These raised crosswalks allow pedestrians to cross the street at the same level of the sidewalks. They slow down vehicles and have an overall calming effect on traffic. Now, here's a few examples of raised crosswalks you can see. It actually requires the vehicles themselves to come up to the level of the sidewalk and then back down again, while the pedestrian on the sidewalk remains at the same level as the sidewalks on either side. So this slows down the vehicles by actually creating an elongated speed bump, if you will. The effects of these are certainly desired in the shops, and it's something that's been used effectively at campuses and shopping centers across the country. I'll also mention a little bit about the architectural character of the shops. This is all in keeping with the retail buildings that are currently there in the center, and we're looking to blend the existing colors and architectural features, such as the use of brick on the facade, and we're also bringing in some columns and pilasters, and a lot of the detailing with the windows and trims is very similar to what's in the existing center right now. We also have a scale of the buildings themselves, there's a lot in keeping with what's there, so you're really not going to see any new type of development, we'll actually be using the same style, the same historical features, so it'll all look like one development when the process is complete. In closing, I also like to add the following points. If this proposal is approved and CVS moves into the new location, Grove Properties would find the strongest retail tenants available that fits a dynamic blend that our shops have to offer. Now, currently, almost 50% of the retailers at the shops are local and regional tenants, and Grove wants to maintain this strong mix of local and national brands. Also, I'll add that there's no intention to deviate from the design which is proposed in our plans. We look forward to working collaboratively with the town to move our plan forward should it receive a favorable vote. And finally, I'd like to say that Grove Properties certainly has done a significant effort, and will continue to do so, in providing information about the project on their website and in direct mailings, as well as going door-to-door to talk to neighbors. As a result of this dialogue, we're also pleased to say that many comments and recommendations from citizens have been incorporated into these plans. I'll open this to any questions or comments or thoughts from anybody.
The existing bank drive-up, is that going to stay?
It gets slightly relocated, and I'll have Matt show you what happens there.
It's just slightly reconfigured. Right now, in the existing, you come around this parking area and then through the drive-through, which is right here, so you actually do this kind of a motion. In what's proposed, this is actually a two-way drive right here, so you'll enter through here, come around here to the bank, the drive-through is in virtually the same location, and then come out.
Okay. But that feature will stay?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Are you fair, what's 25% of the people are prescription-only?
Well, the data shows when a CVS or a pharmacy brings in a drive-through, typically 25% of the people that would have gone into the store are now using the drive-through.
I'm surprised it's only 25%.
It's probably going to increase with time, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I was surprised, yeah. Yes, yes, and then you, Alex.
Quick question, can you go to the slide that shows the drive-through with the orange?
Sure.
So how do you get out of the drive-through? I mean, everything says go in.
You continue, and again, this is two-way traffic, allowing you to exit here and then out. So you could enter from here, you could enter from this area and come in, or you can enter on this new slipway off of William Street.
So that area between what's now the current bank ATM or drive-through and what's proposed there is going to be a two-way?
That is correct, and it'll be sized to accommodate that.
And so people coming through will go one way and people going to the bank are...
Right, as you would in any normal two-way street situation.
The parking space is up on this end, is that dumpsters or is that parking space?
You actually have truck loading areas in the back here to support the retail?
Yeah, excuse me, Alex, go ahead.
Actually, I have a few questions. One thing, and this was the thing that I never could get my head around when you came here this summer, and I guess I'm still not getting it, you're building on top of some of the existing parking spaces, right?
That is correct.
So, that was the thing I could never figure out, because your new chart that shows 139 additional parking spaces, does that take into account the parking spaces that are lost due to the building?
Yes.
Okay, so how do you take that into account? So, I mean, so you talk about 63 on the west end, 7 for, you know, different places, so where does the netting out occur?
Well, this is providing the net gain is 30% more parking, which would be the 139 additional spaces.
See, this is what I'm not getting, though, because I see how you get to the, you add up 139, but what I don't see is how that takes into account the parking spaces that are being built upon.
Well, those we've subtracted out, because this actually nets to a higher number.
Well, actually...
I think what you'll see is that these spots here are now over here.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I don't, because, anyway, I mean, because on the chart that you have, it adds up to 139, but nowhere does it say how many are lost.
Okay, well, I can certainly, I can expand the chart to show that.
So, here's the other thing I, it looks like you're going to be asking for another entrance into the shops on the west end, correct?
Correct.
And do you anticipate that to be a right-hand turn only, or are people going to be able to take a left-hand turn as well?
That would be right turn in only off of Williams.
Okay. And, now, we've had a lot of discussion about CVS, has CVS committed to, you know, being tenancy and to having this drive-through?
I can speak to that. I mean, for the last 10 years, we've been, they've wanted more space at the shopping center. About five years ago, when Bombay left the shopping center, I don't know if you remember that tenant, we had discussion about them taking the Bombay space in conjunction with their existing space that would give them the 13,000 square feet, and there was a lot of intent that we were dealing with and talking to them, and they're very interested in doing that. And as we looked at that and started to talk to some of the tenants, we didn't feel it was the right thing for the shopping center, because of the way the parking is in that area already. So, we told them at that particular time that we're going in a different direction, and honestly, they weren't real happy about that at that particular time, because their footprint these days is 13,000 square feet. And so we've talked to them for the last year, and they're very interested in moving forward if we get this thing rezoned, to put it, the right-sized CVS pharmacy.
I mean, I guess the reason why, because this came up at the town meeting, and it was, to me, it was like a maybe, you know, and I just wanted to see sense.
You know, I never say definitely until I have a lease signed with a pen on paper.
So why, what's stopping that from happening, prior to us making, prior to us as the town making that decision?
The amount of work that goes into a lease, I know, I think you're an attorney, several people are the attorney on the board.
Right.
I mean, just to get a lease signed can take you six months, and they're a big company, so they're not going to start negotiating a lease on a piece of property that they don't know if it's rezoned for business. You know, I've been talking to J. Crew for, oh, about 18 months, too, and same situation, you know, come to me and let me know if you can build me something, and we can talk about a lease.
Okay, so here's another question I had for you about the spaces. So as I look to the far east end, and that seems to be an area that's relatively unchanged, I understand you're changing the pattern of the spaces a little bit, but that's just sort of a matter of drawing different lines on the ground. How was it that you were able to create 31 additional parking spaces on essentially the same amount of area?
I think that's the west end, Alex, that you're talking about.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I got my east and west mixed up, but you know what I'm talking about.
By the fields.
Yeah, by the fields. Are the spaces smaller, or is the space in between the rows smaller? How did you create 31 additional spaces on the same area?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is you can see there's a lot of space in between, I mean, it's not an efficiently laid-out parking scenario right now in this area, so we actually made that a little more efficient. We also took into account some minor shifting of this entry, and by doing that, it freed up, you know, sometimes a small change can make a big improvement, and by making some minor shifting in here, we're able to actually make some significant gains in this area just by doing a more efficient parking layout.
So here's my, I think, my last question, because you made reference to local and regional retailers, and that, I guess, a certain, fairly 50% or so were, what do you mean...
It's actually 48.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I just didn't know what you meant by local or regional retailer, as opposed to the other types of retailers.
Well, I can speak to that. So, you know, when we bought the shopping center 20 years ago, we wanted to have a blend of national, some regional people and some local people, and together, like a downtown area, and, you know, we were very successful. We said to ourselves, we want to go get the best national, the best local, the best regional. So if you look at the shopping center now, you've got Gap and Taylor Cheekers, national type of tenants, and then, you know, Peach Waves is a franchise that's owned by somebody in Long Meadow, Shunik is a local tenant that's owned by David Steinberg from Long Meadow, Oksana Salon is a local woman that owns that, Fleet Feet is a franchise, but it's owned from a fellow from Agawam, so you've got to blend of those local people, and the regional people would be more like, you know, Max Burger, they've got some stores in Connecticut, they've got the Max Tavern, they're here in Long Meadow, so he'd be kind of a regional type of person. So when you add up the shopping center, about 48% of the shopping center is local or, you know, locally-owned businesses.
And then, I guess, finally, this really is my last question. So the way that you described it in July, which seems similar to what you're saying now, is that the impetus behind this change is to avoid something bad happening to the Long Meadow Shops, because the national retailers are going to leave. Is that still...
You've got to be careful the way you say that.
Well, I don't know, and I was just trying to restate what I heard, but maybe you could elaborate on it.
Yeah, so we started to get some phone calls from some national type of retailers that are looking in western Mass, don't really want to be at the Hoyoff Mall, that's more of a blue-collar type of mall. We said to ourselves, well, you know, there's land in Agawam, there's land in west Springfield, somebody could develop a lifestyle center within a proximity to the Long Meadow Shops, and if they did that, we could lose our market share, because we're a very unique property, because we're not off of a highway, you've got to drive a little bit into Long Meadow to come to it. I mean, you could drive around New England and you'd have, be hard-pressed to find a shopping center that's a blend of kind of a neighborhood, downtown, freestyle, lifestyle type of center like the Long Meadow Shops. Lifestyle centers are usually much, much larger than that. So, we said to ourselves, well, if somebody like J. Crew and some of these other tenants are looking in western Mass, you know, somebody could, Agawam, west Springfield, within a 20-mile of Long Meadow, develop something around those tenants, and the way that works is they give them a real sweet deal. So, you know, you come to me as J. Crew or Pottery Barn, and I give you a sweetheart deal for 20 years, you almost get free rent, and then I lease off you and I start stealing tenants from other properties, you know, and if the Gap and those people felt they were better served at a larger lifestyle center, you know, there's a possibility of losing them, and we want to protect our market share. You know, we take our job very seriously, and we love doing business in Long Meadow, and Long Meadow's been very, very good to us.
You guys okay over there?
Yeah, yeah.
You want to speak?
Yeah, I just have some questions.
Sure thing, Mark, go ahead.
Steve, one of the things that I've heard is that, you know, one of the biggest complaints is parking there, and I'm sure, so the question that comes up is, if we're getting all these extra spaces and putting in this massive addition, why wouldn't the Long Meadow Shops have done this, excuse me, done this previously to get all the extra spaces plus put spaces over where you're intending to build now, and answer a lot of questions from a lot of residents that prevent people or discourage people from going there now?
Sure, yeah. Matt, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, you know, it's funny, because we've been looking at this for a while ourselves, trying to figure out, you know, how best to, you know, figure out some of these issues, but a lot of it has to do with access, too. You can't just add more parking without increasing your access or resolving some of the access issues. You know, certainly getting people into the shops by having that two-lane entrance off of Bliss that I mentioned, as well as the additional access coming in off of William Street. You know, first of all, we're kind of landlocked, we can't park anymore on that area that's zoned residential. There's some parking that's on there now, it's allowed because that was a previously agreed-to approval by the board at one point, but for us to put more parking in that area and provide more parking to the shops would require us going back, and I assume, probably through the same process. A lot of what we're doing in changing the accesses and the entrance points, we're actually shifting them slightly, and it's just creating a domino effect, so by doing this, it's kind of allowing us to do all that.
But you can do that now, I mean, I lived in town for 40 years, and the parking configuration there has changed at least two or three times.
But Mark, one of the biggest problems is where CVS is located right now, we've got a lot of short-trip traffic that's constantly going in and out of that area, right in the center of the shops, and that's something that really needs to be alleviated. So in looking at this, that was, became one of the bigger concerns, is trying to get that traffic that's the in-and-out, the short, and moving it to one side, and having a dedicated parking field for it, and that's something that you really can't do right now without a major design change, which is really why we're here. Everything kind of links together in many ways.
As part of this, you indicated that traffic studies would be done or could be done, and one of the things I'd suggest, and that concerns me, is that the number of people going to CVS who come from the west rather than from the east, I think the east you have, appear to have addressed and con... appeared to have addressed and considered by having this right turn off of Williams. But people coming from the east going to CVS, it may in fact be more complicated by having them not come in, go literally all the way to the building, and then having to weave back through out to the street as opposed to...
They would come in through here.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, can they go straight to right and go through there, recognizing that there's cars coming in and out of that area that is a CVS drive-through exit? And, you know, I'm just wondering if the consideration for traffic coming in that way really alleviates traffic or doesn't in fact exchange one issue for another issue? I mean, I don't have an answer.
That's a good question.
I'm just concerned that it alleviates because my sense is that if the residents, particularly those going to CVS, are Long Meadow residents, the predominance of Long Meadow is to the west of those shops as opposed to the east of those shops. And you might end up with an internal traffic situation that just trades one issue for the other. That's just an observation I wanted to cast along. I don't know how to address it, but I'm not convinced that this alleviates internal traffic inside the parking area just for that reason.
Yeah, I am convinced that part of the site and design review that the planning board will do, they're gonna require a whole site and design review of this and traffic study of this area. And so, the way that works is that the town actually hires somebody, so I can't actually hire my own traffic guy and say, you know, kinda get him under there. So, the town would act as the traffic guy, and I have to pay for him. So, you know, there'd be a whole study done on that, Mark. And that traffic study might indicate a few changes on this that needs to be made to make it safe for everybody, you know? And I think we need to take a look at this. You know, this property hasn't been really modified, that parking lot, since the '70s. You know, I've been there for 20 years. It's been basically the same. And I know this is an opportunity to make it safer. And in my office, I look down upon this property five days a week, you know? I see the issues. I see the old people trying to get into CVS and having to park 100 yards away from the entrance to CVS and walk with a walker at the entrance to CVS and then try to get all the way to the back to where the pharmacy is. I see it every day, you know? I see the students that are walking on the sidewalk every day, going back and forth from the school, you know? And, you know, we're trying to make that safer also.
I understand. I can do it. There are other issues. Richard, if I could, just a couple of other things. And Steve, this is for you. As you heard, you weren't here back when Mr. Whitmer was here earlier, but I commented on it and was expressed concern about neighbors and the effects of neighbors in the past and continue to hear that from people, particularly those behind who are most impacted by noise, by odors from exhaust fans and things like that. And I guess I'd like to hear you address me and address people who live there a little bit more directly on why we had those difficulties and what's gonna be different as we expand it and there are more stores with more opportunities for difficulties.
Sure, Mark. So, as I've stated, I've run the shopping center for 20 years. In 20 years, I've had three phone calls from neighbors in 20 years. I had a neighbor 10 years ago that complained because the trash haulers were coming in at 5:00 in the morning and rattling the cans and waking up all the neighbors. So, he called me. I called the police department to let them know because that's a legal activity. I called the rubbish company to let them know that they can no longer do that. So, they started coming later in the day to remove those cans. That person actually stood up at the planning board meeting several months ago to indicate that I had done that. Back when Ume came into the shopping center, oh, two years ago, they were disposing of their fish in a manor, and there was odor behind the shopping center. Somebody called. We educated the people that operate the Ume restaurant to put their fish in bags so it didn't smell. I removed that dumpster and cleaned it. We've never had an issue since then. And then, the third issue, which is the one I think you're speaking of, is there was a, Max Burger moved in, and there was a noise issue with a tenant directly behind Max Burger. And so, they, you know, it was really Max Burger's equipment, so they contacted Max Burger. And Max Burger, basically, they did some sound studies. And Max Burger determined that they were in their legal right, the noise wasn't louder than it was supposed to be. And basically told Max Burger, said they weren't gonna do anything. So, that resident contacted me. I'm a little more vested in the community, you know, 20 years of service over there. And I met with this neighbor. I went to their backyard to see what they're talking about, to see if I could understand it and to educate myself on what was going on. And what I found out is this neighbor has, they have the Garden of Eden in their backyard. It is absolutely beautiful. I mean, and she sits by a fountain, and there's a pond and coryfish. It's beautiful. And that's her release. And so, what else I found out is that the noise issue was from a fan for the grill system. And Max Burger has a, Max Burger leaves that on 24/7. And the reason that they do that is they got gas equipment underneath there. And if there should be a gas leak, they wanna make sure that the gas exits out of the building because if they didn't do that, leave it on overnight, that it could fill up with gas. Somebody could come in the building, flip a light switch, and blow up the building. And we actually have a property out in Bozeman, Montana, and this happened to a young girl there three years ago. Restaurant filled up with gas. Young girl came in to open up the restaurant in the morning, flipped the switch, blew the building off Main Street in Bozeman, and she got killed. So, once I understood that this thing was, it was a 24, it was a seven-day, 24-hour noise that was happening, you know, we started working with her to see if we couldn't, how we could rectify it. So, I had given her some suggestions, which she incorporated, and that lasted about a year. And I thought it was honestly resolved. And then, back this spring, you know, I got a phone call from her, and she said there are still 11 issues. So, we looked at some other options, which would enclose that fan with a noise fence on the roof. And, you know, as a landlord, you don't really love installing things on your roof because you, flat roofs leak on their own, never mind when you start installing things on top of them. So, you know, we've worked with this neighbor. We found, we think we found a solution, and we're putting a noise fence around that fan motor. And that should be installed, depends on our winter, if it still stays good, it'll be in the 30 days. If we get a lot of snow, it might not happen early spring. That's my...
Thank you. I appreciate that. What we heard was somewhat different from that, but primarily the same thing. And the degree of difference or disagreement was different from what we had heard, including some letters, I think, at some point that the town manager had to get involved shortly after you got here. But I appreciate you explaining those.
You're welcome, Mark.
But again, there's, you know, to me, that was an issue that did not go away, as you indicated that it was resolved, because I continued to hear from them throughout that period of time, which is why it was still frustrating my mind to bring it up the minute Mr. Whitmer showed up here. We, you know, there, that and a couple of other things. And I guess this issue of, you know, addressing the needs of the town, responsive to the needs of the town, when we have needs versus when the Long Meadow shops have the needs is important to me. And I just wanted to make that clear. I understand that I'm not looking for anything today, and you can tell me, make me all these, you know, opportunities that may come up. But I wanna keep this in mind because, for example, when the high school was under construction and we had an issue with parking, we were looking for 30 days of parking for students or teachers or something like that. We're told, no, that wasn't in the cards for the area to the extreme weather. Things like that have impacts on me when I'm trying to make a decision, or more importantly, when I'm trying to influence people in town as to whether the Long Meadow shops have been responsive.
Yeah. Can I speak to that for a moment, too?
Sure.
Because there's reasons behind that place also, Mark. So, you know, basically, again, my office sits in the corner there. And right now, you've got sporting events that take place on the field on Thursday. There's a football game on Friday. On Thursday afternoons, you'll see that section to the left there. That will be full of students and parents going to watch their kids to see their child play sports. And I was even seeing when the high school was being built that because, because people were parking there, a few people were still parking there from the high school, I was starting to see parents start to park in front of tenants, okay? And I need to protect the businesses that are in the shopping center. I need to protect those tenants' businesses. So, I was afraid that by having 20 contractor trucks parked in there all day long and then having the parents come to try to visit their kids while they're watching their kids in sports, that now I'd have cars parked in front of my tenants, Bertucci's, Karen &amp; Company, Fleet Feet. And, you know, they're trying to do business in a very difficult environment, and, you know, I take that very seriously. So, that's kinda why we said, you know, I'm sorry, but we can't have the trucks parked there all day long. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome.
First of all, thank you for coming back because I think I walked out with you when you were here, Matt, and said, you know, parking was my number-one concern. There's two, a couple of suggestions. One is, on this screen here, when you show these speed bumps, they're in dark green or whatever that color is, and it almost looks like they're blocked off.
Sure.
And perception-wise, because I had a look at this two or three times while you were talking, I'm just telling you that, to me, I looked at it and said, how do you get through? Just a suggestion. I mean, I'm not the sharpest tool.
I appreciate it.
I mean, it's just something. The other thing I would suggest is if you ever, if you could put an overlay, and I think that addresses a lot of the parking, of how it looks to how it might look. I mean, what I'm happy to see is the number of parking spaces that were added. My, the concern I have, or the question I have is, relatively speaking, you know how many, roughly, how many trips you might be having coming in with three new stores? Because eventually, the CVS store's gonna get filled, so there'll be three new tenants at some point. Does, with the amount of the parking spaces that you have here, do you think that the land mass is enough to handle those additional customers that are coming in for the three additional tenants? Not just the parking, but you're gonna, you know, the amount of people that'll be coming because some will walk, very few, but I mean, you know, that's, my concern is what's gonna be the inflow and outflow of there every day versus where it is today? Do we, you know, and I don't need you to give me, because you're gonna have, like you said, someone to come into a traffic study, and that's what the planning board's gonna work on. But that would be something that I would like to feel a little bit better about is, I know we're expanding it, and there's gonna be more parking, but there's also gonna be a lot more vehicles coming in there, hopefully, if you don't want three new businesses and no traffic. I mean, that's...
I mean, the town is very specific. If you have a restaurant with this many seats, you need this many parking spaces. If you have a dentist, you need this many parking spaces. If it's retail, you need this many parking spaces. So, this equation is based on these three, these basically being a CVS and three other retail spaces.
And it's not, it's just as you start to get towards the density of the businesses in that area. I mean, you know, it'd be different if this were the only thing there. But then, you have across the street, and I mean, at some point in time, I'm assuming the church is gonna go up for sale, and, you know, there might be some commercial thing there. And that's a whole, that's not your concern. But anyway, I just wanted to tell you, I like the way the parking's laid out. The additional spaces, I think, are important. And how you have it, the flow of it, I think, especially in this middle area here where CVS is, because I've driven through the shops, not able to find a parking spot just to go get a cup of coffee or something and just drove out. So, I think that'll make a much bigger improvement. I just, like I said, during the planning board process, I mean, I like to just pay attention on my own self just to, to the traffic, but I just, but thank you for coming in and doing it because I think this is a much bigger, and I don't, and I understand there might have been some miscommunication, but I think this is a bigger, a much different presentation than when you were here in the summer. And it tells a lot more, at least to what my concerns were, speaks to my concerns about what we talked about back in June. So, thanks for coming back in. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We listen to a lot of people, Paul. We talk to and listen to a lot of people.
Any other board comments?
I just had one. You know, I just did some math here. And so, what I did is I just divided the number of spaces currently, parking spaces, by the number of square feet of retail according to your chart. And then, I looked at the future, the number of spaces per the number of square feet. And if my math isn't correct, is correct, we have .57 spaces currently for every 100 square feet. And then, in the future, we would have .60 spaces per 100 square feet, which, you know, is a small increase. You know, .57 is a little smaller than .60, but it's not huge. I mean, it's, you know, we're talking about 4% maybe. Am I, did I do my math wrong, or am I missing something?
You didn't do the math wrong at all.
Okay.
It's just it's not a linear function.
Okay.
Because within the existing shops, we have businesses which have a different number of spaces per square feet.
Right.
And we have restaurants, which also have a different number. But the business is usually less, and the retail is more. So, you know, it's not a, it's not a linear equation, unfortunately. But what I can do is I'll do the existing tenant mix that are there now against the number of spaces to come up with that ratio. And then, I'll give you what the new ratio is, and we'll see where it lands. I actually haven't done that calculation, so I'd be interested to see myself where it is.
And when you do that, can, because you were gonna mention about the netting out, you know, about how the spaces were losing.
Sure. Factoring the loss as well.
Yes, please.
Sure.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I live on Edgewood where CVS is now.
Okay.
So, I fully expect them, if this were to go through, to close down and consolidate one. But to Mark's point, I do believe that you'll see an increase in traffic from the west going to CVS if that were to happen. So, I think it's even more important to show the flow, as Mark was indicating, you know, to go, if you're not taking the right in off of Williams, you know, what, where it's gonna go and how it's gonna look. That, because I, and that has nothing to do with you. I just, I wouldn't imagine they would keep...
Actually, Paul, we've had extensive dialogue with them about that very subject, and they feel that it's a different market. So, you have the Long Meadow shops area, and then you got Route 5. And I think all parties are a little bit more comfortable today than they were a month ago that CVS is definitely not gonna close that store.
That's even better news. Okay.
Yep.
Just wanna ask a quick question for process. The calculations on parking and things like that, because I, I'm aware that it is not a linear thing because there are different parking factors for different uses. Is that something that gets ferreted out during site plan and review?
No, actually, you know, I have to apologize in some ways for that because we have the chart and the parking calculations, and we actually strip that off of these images as a means to kind of simplify the data. So, I will certainly have that for the planning board meeting on Wednesday night. It was no means of, you know, not wanting to show that information. It was just maybe a desire to simplify on the part of the design team.
And Steve, that's a function of the ZBA, so they would take a look at that, and we'd have to give them a chart of everybody that's coming in there and take a look at the town bylaws and show them, okay, we've got this much square foot with this many different tenants, and this is what's coming in, and there's 100% parking. Because if you look around town, a lot of the sites in town have a variance on the parking because a lot of communities these days, if you develop something new, they really don't want great areas of asphalt, okay? And what they're saying to themselves is restaurants do most of the business 6:00 on. Well, the doctors here are closed at 6:00, you know? So, a lot of communities are looking at that. And that's why the parking here, there was a variance when Max Burger came in because the ZBA looked at that and said, you know something, these tenants are closed at after 6:00. You know, Max Burger doesn't get busy until 5:00, 5:30. And so, those parking lots, those spaces aren't even used because your orthodontist is closed, your banks are closed, you know, a lot of your retailers are closed. And that's kind of the new thinking with retail developments throughout the country.
Just a quick comment. The parking spaces you show behind the building, are those practical, commercial parking spaces since there's no access to the businesses from the rear?
That would be employee parking.
And they, but do they have access to the building from the...
They do, Mark. And like, your local tenants allow their tenants, they, they all park back there. Some of the nationals, they just have, because they might be doing business in other places in our, quite as nice as Long Meadow, they have policy where, where their employees can't come through the back door. But your local tenants, like Aksa, they all park back there, Assembly of Bread, Dave, he parks back there, Shuny, they park back there. So all your local tenants are pretty much parking behind the shopping center for the most part, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
See, I guess you have, yeah, you have the control over there if you could hit the off button.
You will be an expert at this by the end of the week there, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
What is this, hear a lot of noise over there? Again, the table's falling apart. Okay, PVC Council on Aging's Site Assessment Report.
As you saw on the packet, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission did submit their final report on the site assessment for our senior center, or the, the adult center, or Council on Aging, depending on who you talk to, those terms are used interchangeably. Just to review, this was funded by virtue of a citizen petition at last year's, at the annual town meeting, I believe, was it the annual town meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
One question.
Excuse me.
Matt?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. The last time I, I came before the group, the group made a motion to move this onto the planning.
It's already been done.
Okay.
There's so much.
Never assume anything, right?
We were waiting for you to leave.
So it was, it was funded by a citizen petition at a town meeting, and we, the town took over, or, or I shouldn't say took over, facilitated the management of the project, because, you know, private individuals can't be responsible for spending and committing treasury funds. So even though it was a citizen petition, it's still town levy money, and so someone from the town had to be responsible for it, and so I fulfilled that role. And the group of folks who had been working on this initiative for some time, basically became a town manager's task force, in a somewhat informal way, and we just tried to keep the effort going that they had started, because like I said, it was driven by the citizens. There were really two or three major components of this study. The first is a survey of, we sent out like over 2,000 surveys, and we got back like 113 or something like that. So it was a pretty, I think, a pretty low response rate, which I was a little surprised at, but it asked a variety of questions about the facility, the services, the programs, the staff, and it was, it was really good. The responses we got were thorough, so that was good information, I just think we had hoped for a higher rate of return. It includes some analysis of demographic and census information, compares us to several other communities. We had selected four communities to be our kind of comparable ones for the purposes of analysis. All that information is laid out in there. You know, you see there's a lot of comments from the surveys, and then it has summaries of the comparable communities, which are East Long Meadow, Hampden, Suffield, Connecticut. I think there's a little more, I'm missing one. Westboro, sorry, the town of Westboro. So it goes through, it reviews their facilities, square footage, what they offer for programs, how many seniors are served, things like that. So it establishes kind of a baseline level of data to then project what do Long, what does Long Meadow currently providing compared to what other communities are receiving, or what other seniors and other communities are receiving. And then it goes into the site assessment. We, the group had previously identified several sites, and so we kind of put those sites forward to, to be analyzed by PVPC based on some, look at topography, any kind of ownership restrictions, things like that. And then Pioneer Valley ranked the sites based on those criteria, and I, it's location, buildable area, ownership, access, access slash parking, zoning, existing structure, utilities slash infrastructure, topography, soils, wetlands, hazardous materials. And, you know, the hazardous materials was not soil borings, it was just going back and looking at DEP files. So most of this was done from the Office of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they didn't go out and do any additional, you know, site work or geotechnical engineering, just to be clear. And they were ranked on a scale of 1 to 5, with, I believe, 5 being the most preferable. And, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do I have that right?
Yes, 5 has to be the most advantageous.
Right. And then it was the highest number of points. I was confused there for a second, highest number of points. So they looked at the Cordis House, Stroopel Field, Turner Park. Stroopel Field is shorthand for, there's a lot of land behind the library that includes Stroopel and DePipow Field, so it wasn't just that one ball diamond, that was the entire parcel behind. You can see the, the parcels are all identified in the report. A section of Bliss Park, and then the existing facility. And so it kind of goes through the, as the, on page 47 is where the discussion starts. And it turns out that Greenwood, renovated Greenwood with, with an addition, would be the most advantageous, or most desirable site for a new senior, for an expanded senior center in this case. Turner Park, back in where I'm told the restaurant used to be by the lake, was a second ranked site. And then Bliss Park, I'm sorry, Stroopel Field was, that area behind the library was determined to be the third ranked site. And they go through some discussion that I won't go through in great detail now, of what would be involved. And then they have some findings about, again, what, what would be the recommended size of the facility, how they would approach designing it, and, you know, how big a multipurpose room and things like that. And then they made some recommendations, and they laid out three options. Option 1 is do nothing and continue current operations. Option 2, substantially renovate and expand the existing Greenwood facility into a municipal senior center. And then option 3, construction of a new senior center at Turner Park. And then they identified some next steps. And they basically said option 2 would be the one that, that would be the, would be the recommended option for the town to pursue.
Option 2?
Option 2.
There was Greenwood.
So, I mean, there's a lot of information in the report, and we can certainly, and we can certainly discuss it going forward. I mean, there isn't really a clear next step. I, I truthfully have not. We did meet as a group and go over the preliminary findings, and I'll give Pioneer Valley credit, that discussion really radically changed the outcome of the report, because we, their initial findings, when they presented them to the task force, there were, you know, members of the task force had some concerns about some of the assumptions or the findings that PVPC had made, and expressed that concern. Pioneer Valley went back and, like, for example, the sites, they ranked the sites absent any consideration of ownership. And so the rankings were very different, and as a group, we discussed, should we be factoring ownership as a consideration for site evaluation? And, you know, I, I didn't want to unilaterally say how to, you know, one way or the other, but through, I think, a good group discussion, it was determined that, you know, the sensible thing to do is to factor for ownership, and that kind of turned the rankings, really significantly reshuffled the deck on the rankings, because obviously Greenwood is the easiest for owner, the town already owns it, and it's already the senior center. Turner Park is second, because the town owns it. Based on our research, it is not restricted by a covenant through Article 97 or some other permanent conservation restriction, whereas Bliss Park is. Stroopel Field, and that area behind the library, is not similarly restricted by conservation restrictions or Article 97, but it is not owned by the town, it's owned by the Library Board of Trustees, with whom the town has an active partnership. They would still have to, they would still have to voluntarily sell the town or grant a long-term easement to construct the senior center. And that, that can be a challenge. So, and that's all, that, those factors and the explanation of them are laid out in the report. So I, I want to commend not only the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for doing a thorough job, and, and the, the survey information really is presented in a very, very effective way, graphically. If you've looked at the report, it really, I give them a lot of credit, it is in somewhat dull information is presented in an easy and approachable way. But I also want to commend the task force, who spent many, many hours working on this issue, bringing it, you know, getting the petition to the town meeting, and sitting through a lot of meetings, both with me and without me, and really staying true to the process. And I think there's, I think there's, the study sets them up to make some decisions on their own, in terms of, as residents, what, what do they want to do? And I also think it gives the town and the board some consideration in terms of where, if, what option the board would like to pursue, if any, and how that would fit in with our overall capital needs. So I'm open to questions.
Board?
Go ahead, Matt. Yeah, Steve, I read through this pretty thoroughly. I, I agree that it was a thorough report, and included a lot of issues here that might not otherwise have been reviewed. And I guess the one issue that concerns me is, and because I don't know how much of their basis, or how much of their, many of their conclusions were based on the survey, only because, like you, I was extraordinarily disappointed in the response rate of the survey, to the point where it's, you know, questioning whether any of it's statistically significant or in fact significant at all, given the fact that I presume that, you know, there are probably people who were very, very vehement, maybe one way or the other, submitting that, and still, even of the 117 responses we got back, I think only 85 or 82 of them were actually Long Meadow residents, although the others were, you know, stated to be users of, of, of the adult center, there were only 85 who were Long Meadow residents. So out of a couple of thousand surveys that were sent, or made available, and I got to tell you, I didn't fill one out, so maybe I'm, I'm also guilty of, of being there. But that concerns me, only because I don't know what parts of their conclusions came from, from that, and because of that, and because I believe that, you know, we haven't spent money on this building, it really is a school and all that kind of stuff. If we were to go for, I would certainly encourage us to do it in a phased manner, rather than let's appropriate a bunch of money and go in and, and do everything, because I think we can see even the little bit of money that we put into it in the last couple of years, or are currently putting into it, an upgraded electrical system, a new roof on the building, a, you know, a gift that redid one of the rooms for, in, in memory of Karen Michaelman. You know, we can see some progress, and I think if you do it in a phased, phased way, if we choose to do something, we can also get to a, a point where you stop everywhere, every so often along the way, and you assess, so are we still going in the right direction, or are we making progress, and are we made enough? I think had this been more definitive, clear-cut, more, I guess, based on, on larger numbers of people, you might be able to argue for, we need to go in there and do some wholesale modifications, but lacking that, I, that would be my approach to how we, what we do next with this, which is say, okay, so what would be the first step of a multi-step system? Just my personal opinion.
Richard, can I just respond to that briefly?
Sure.
Do you mind, Paul? I just want to make one comment. When the, the last question is, does the current adult center meet your needs, 63% said yes. So I, I mean, the one thing that was, that was not clear was, there was not a clear, I mean, it started with people who really want to see a new center, and I completely understand why they want a new center, everyone would love a new center, if money were no object. But there wasn't through, I don't think the survey data established a mandate for a new building entirely, especially when you look at that, the kind of catch-all question, I mean, all these, these previous 17 questions led you to this big question, which is, does this work for you? And the majority, vast majority of people said yes. And the other thing, you know, we're about to spend almost $50,000 to renovate the kitchen at Greenwood, specifically for the seniors nutrition program. And I, and I should, Richard, I should have mentioned in the announcements that the kitchen, I think, is going to, the kitchen's going to close on January 20th. Meals on Wheels will be provided through an agreement with East Long Meadow, but there'll be no in-room, in-house dining at Greenwood for, I believe, three weeks. They should check, they should check with the, the senior center staff on that, on the specific dates. But I do know, folks can go to East Long Meadow as well to have lunch there if they want to, but Meals on Wheels will still be provided. So you're right, we have been investing in a phased way, and that's the thing, that's, that's the thing that's good and bad. I mean, the report didn't, didn't identify any, you know, oh my goodness, we have to do this right now, things, but also didn't say, here's the next thing we, you know, we have to do, so.
Yeah. Paul, I'll, I'll get right to you. Paul just mentioned that it might be good if we get that on a website, too. It's much, I don't know how many people we got that actually come, they'll have it posted over there, too, I'm sure, won't they, Stephen?
PVPC?
No, I mean the lunchroom that's going to be shut down.
You'd like to know before they show up for lunch.
Oh, yeah, they, they put it in the voice, it was in the voice that went out, and they're going to advertise it broadly.
Okay. Okay, Marie?
What I found pretty strong in this report was when I read the demographic analysis. You didn't get too many people responding, because I don't think we have a center that really can provide the services right now, and so people aren't going to it. So the people that do go to the center now responded to the survey, but we saw the small numbers, and you compare that to what the Democrat, the demographic analysis is here. There's a huge difference. It says, six, a percentage of 60 peoples over 65 and living alone in Long Meadow is 29.1%. And when you started to add all of the ages up, and, and their projections, we're talking about in the next 10 years, 1/3 of Long Meadow is going to be the population that this has to service.
They're going to feel like me.
And right now, the people that are going there are going there for lunch, but we need to look to service the population that are working seniors, that are active seniors. And I think we're starting to see program change. When you start to see the skiing groups go out there, we're, we're building the walking path. And I think what we need to do is not to build it for the people that have been going in the past five years, but build it for what the needs for the future are going to be. If we really wait five or 10 years, and we phase this in, we might run into trouble, in that we're already looking, when they compare to what other towns are offering that population, we are really behind. And when you say, well, we've been doing things, well, we've been doing things to not get the building condemned. The water, the roof is leaking, we put, fix the roof. We had, the electric was so bad, they were putting so many sockets into the strips, it was actually dangerous, so we had to fix the electric. And when it came to the exhaust fans, I mean, it was really a terrible situation down there, we had to fix the fans. I think what I'd like us to do, and I think this is the beginning of the step, is what do we need to service our senior population coming the next 10 years? And what are people looking for? So I think the survey, the first phase of the survey, told us we need to do something, and I'd like to see what is the best way to go. I think it was really interesting when we were looking at different types of where we were going to put it, and it would really change the character of that senior center. If we put it behind the library, then it would almost be like a village effect, where people could walk to the library, they could walk to Town Hall, they could walk to stores, and so that was a, a different feel. Keeping where it is would, I think, also encourage more of an active senior population going there. We already have pickleball going down in the tennis courts, we have the pool that's there, we're doing the walking path, there's the bocce ball, and so it is, I, what we need to do is sit down and decide what is the best thing for our seniors in the next 10 years. And I think this is a great way that we're beginning the conversation. I agree, Mark, I'm disappointed with a number of people, but I think if you really talk to a lot of people in town that really fit this population, they would say, well, what, what can we do down there? What is the value of it? And I don't think people realize, if they get, if they have, end up having knee surgery, there are services to help them, and they can access that now, and they could be working seniors, and going back to work afterwards, that, they have people down there to help with taxes, languages, skiing trips, trips to New York. There's so much that we can provide, we are not providing yet, and I'm really excited that we have the new director, and we're, we're possibly looking at expanding programs. But I think it's, we have to look at the whole, whole project, and where do we want to be in 10 years, and what is that center going to look like? And I, I think that we have to have that vision before we can even consider where our phases in will be. So that's my comment.
Alex?
Actually, can I have a comment, but first I have a question. What is pickleball?
I don't quite understand, but they take the tennis courts and they make it smaller, and it's very, very popular.
It's hugely, if you Google it, it'll blow your mind, because I did the same thing when Emily Perkins first told me about it. Have you ever played Kadima at the beach, where it's the two wooden mallets, and it's a little rubber ball, and you can't hit the sand, you have to hit it back and forth? It's basically like that on a tennis court, but I think the ball is a wiffle ball. But in the summertime, you can't drive into Greenwood without people on the tennis courts there, and then they book the gym. But it is, like I said, just Google it, and it's this whole thing that I had no idea about.
National tournaments.
Phenomenon.
Yeah.
So I guess my comment is, I, I was pleased with the report, I had a similar reaction to the, the survey response, and, and I did ask the question that Mark you raised, is how much value did it really have ultimately? But I think it, I think the report does kind of pose a good question, which I think you're raising, Marie, which is, you know, to me, it's like a call to action. It's, it's saying, look, we're going to have a significant increase in the number of seniors, you know, we need more hours, we need to do more things, you know, and, you know, how are we going to accomplish that? know, and, you know, how are we going to accomplish that? You know, and to me, it's not clear how you have that vision that's laid out in that report and kind of do it in an incremental way. I'm not sure how that happens. So, you know, I think that's the kind of conversation that we all ought to be having is, you know, do we want to realize, you know, the vision of, you know, longer hours, more meals, evening programs, you know, to, to kind of anticipate, you know, this growing population? Or are we going to sort of, you know, kind of take things one year at a time?
Can I respond to that? No, you both, you both raise excellent points. And one thing I do want to say is, even though it is a limited amount of responses, I mean, 117 people, still 117 people. So, you know, certainly Amy and I, Amy Sada, our executive, new executive director, and I have certainly gone through and said, what can we be doing better today based on the feedback we've gotten? So we are internalizing the feedback. I don't want, I don't want the, in terms of data, how solid is the data? I'm with you. It's, when you have that lower response rate, it's limited. But there are plenty of, people wrote many comments, and what can you glean from the data that is something that you can use to shape your way of viewing the center today and how we offer programs today? And so we are certainly doing that. It's not just because it's a low response rate we're disregarding, and we are taking it to heart. I think the one challenge that you'll find, that I have found in, even in my brief tenure as interim executive director, but also in discussing, you know, senior centers with other, either other executive directors or other town managers, is that there's a gap between the number of people who are, who would be considered kind of a target market for services or programs at a senior center, and the number of people in those same cohorts that actually want to avail themselves of those services. And I think that's the key challenge, is getting people out of their homes and down to the senior center. And it's like, it's like the other side of the building with the daycare. There are just so many more options now than there were 20 years ago, that it's hard to remain, you know, competitive for their time and attention for programming and things like that. And that's something that, like I said, we've added, you know, skiing and the trips, and we're trying to, you know, remain competitive and attract people to the center. But it's not, it's not just the people are out there, you know, because during one of our task force meetings, where, Richard, and where you were there, we talked about the comparison to how much money parks and rec programs get. Well, the parents of children of the ages who use those programs want to be served. They want to come out. They want to use, do the parks and rec programs. That's why they come out and they pay additional fees to do it. There are many people who are falling to these demographic categories who aren't as interested in coming into the senior center and may not be no matter where it's located. And so that's where, I think, Mark, to your point about a phased approach, I think we need to certainly take one step at a time and peel the onion in terms of what is our overall market potential based on this demographic data, but also, I agree with Marie and Alex, that doesn't mean you have to hold yourself. If a wholesale improvement emerges as something that should be pursued, we shouldn't necessarily hide from that either.
Thank you. I think there's two different things that are, that need to be discussed when you're looking at this. And I had a long conversation with Phil Hallahan, and I think after that had extreme confidence in whatever this came back with is probably the direction that we should be looking at. I think demographically speaking, we surveyed the wrong people, because we are surveying the current users as opposed to expected users or potential users. And I think there's a vast shift in how the demographics between the people that are currently using it and the people who could potentially be using it in 10 years. We say this number that in 10 years, the majority of Long Meadow's gonna be retired. And I don't believe that's gonna be true, because those, a lot of those folks will move out and you'll have people coming in with families. And because if we go on that trajectory, we'll probably have 300 kids in the school system if we continue on that line, if everybody's gonna be retired. So there's that, we also didn't take in consideration that flow in and out of residents in that demographic and, you know, and so forth. And I think that, you know, and everybody's talked about it, but you gotta look at the facility and, and what you want to do. I looked at the report, and there were sometimes I would go back, read an answer on one page and go back three pages to see a contradictory answer on something else, in a very similar type question in terms of needs and uses. What I haven't heard is, and I think this is part of the discussion, like you said, you're taking some of this information, sitting down with Amy, is I like to hear from Amy what we could do today and what we need to do facility-wise today to get it to where we are serving the needs of those that need it today. And then I think that's one component. And then the next component is take a look and say, okay, what about the next 10 years? So if we can take the information from this report, say, this is what we can do today or for the next year, three years, whatever, and then the long-range plan is X. And that also includes a discussion of do we want the daycare center with the council and agent? And I think we need to really encompass all of that. If we're gonna add on to a building that already has space that isn't used for the council and agent, we might want to consider moving that to another location. And I think all of that needs to be considered when you're looking at it. But I, I think what it does is it sets a direction. But I think not necessarily just the building in phases, but also the delivery of services in phases, in terms of what can we do today for the next three years to make it better for everybody that's going there. And I think, you know, at one of the council and agent meetings, and Marie, you may have been there, John Bowen's over at Emerson, and, you know, he'll tell you that, try to get people to come out. There's certain people who just won't come out to it. I mean, regardless of, you know, we can have all the bells and whistles. But I think the majority of the people that want to use it should be able to use it. And I don't know if that outreach is there either. I don't know. I didn't get into, I didn't see that in the report where it said, you know, what is our expectation of what our outreach should be to get the people to come in and use it? You know, there was a big number of people who said they didn't use it in their, in their response. I mean, it was a sizable number. It wasn't, I don't think it was the majority, but in that response, there was a big number of people who actually responded and said they've never used it. And that's actually concerning, that they went to respond and take the time to respond and use it. And then there was a subgraph, I think the next thing is the Y. And that was kind of scattered. There must have been like eight or nine responses. And I don't know if we can glom something off of that. But I think if, you know, I, I understand the call to action, but I don't think, I think that it's a, it's, there's a couple of steps in that call to action. Some, I think, is immediate, and I think some needs a little bit, a little bit more long-term planning about what that facility should look like in its entirety. You know, should it have a gym in there and that type of thing? And versus the daycare and senior center? Thank you.
Just one quick follow-up point, because we went through that when we were talking about the survey. And we sent it out with the voice, which is the primary means of the center communicating with its audience. People sign up to receive the voice, which is the newsletter that they send out. And they send out 2,000 or so copies. And there really aren't great ways to do this, but we thought that was the best way to reach people who are familiar with the center, because we had that very discussion. Should we be talking to people who are center users now, or if we're talking about a building that's a future plan, should we be talking about people who will eventually be center users? And the short, the takeaway was, the decision is made to use, to focus on people who are current users, because they know the facility. Someone who may use it in 10 years has never been there, doesn't even know what it is, has no idea, you know, we wouldn't get great and meaningful information. So that's why we ended up, we made a conscious decision to focus on current users, because that information is helpful today and also can help shape future planning. And you're right, I mean, it's, to that question, if you're not a user of the adult center, what are the reasons you do not attend more often? You know, the biggest response was no response. And then we got not interested in the activities. And then, you know, physical appearance in the center, hours of operation, and it goes down from there. Not familiar with activities, inconvenient location, which, you know, it seems pretty convenient off of one of our main streets. But, and then the other comments, you know, it's kind of gloomy, or, you know, it's dark, too long hallways. I mean, sad, or sad and dumpy was one of them. I don't know if I agree with that. I always, I enjoy going there. People seem to be pretty happy to be there. And I, you know, in 117 responses, you're gonna get some people that just aren't happy with anything. But like I said, it's, we know that as an old, as a former school, it's mostly corridor. And then you have these large, these rooms that are oversized for some functions and undersized for others. And it's the reconfiguration plus in addition that is, that's why that's the number one recommended thing. And I do think that that is within reach. But you have to balance out a new DPW facility, the school committee's initiating an effort for a new middle school. I mean, there are, there are many things going on, and we have to make sure that the priority, the town board and town meeting, come up with a set of priorities that they want to commit to. So I don't know if anybody else has any more questions or comments.
Well, I, to me, that sort of leads to a point that I've been making repeatedly, is to try to look at all of our capital needs together in sort of a long-term capital planning process, so that we can decide, you know, how does a senior center in a DPW facility, and a new middle school, and water, and sewer, and roads, and sidewalks, how do those all balance off? And what are our highest priorities? So...
I can't believe I said that.
Well, it's, well, maybe you're just agreeing with me.
Any more? Okay, I get to chat. I know one thing for sure. You're not gonna know that you want to go to the senior center until it's that time of your life that you want to go to the senior center. And you can't envision this at 45. You gotta get up to 65, and then you say, what was I doing five years ago as versus to this year? What am I gonna be five more years down the road? So you can't guess on that. There's no way you can anticipate it's gonna be different for everybody, except the fact that I will guarantee you, as you get older, you change quickly, more quickly than you did as a young person, because things start to happen. So they're figuring the population, if they stay in place by, we will have one-third, one-third of our community be seniors. And this is gonna be across the country, too. This is, I don't know where, they're not gonna heighten certain communities. It's generally happening across our entire country because of the baby, because of a lot of people sitting at the stable, the baby farmers. And we are the reason that this big bubble is coming. So we don't know what the needs are gonna be. These people are taking their needs the best they can on industry standards and figuring what it's gonna be. Stephen's point's good. I was gonna mention it myself. We currently know right now that you've got a DPW complex that needs to be replaced. We do know that the schools will be forthcoming for a statement of interest on a middle school, and there's possible consideration for consolidation, which is gonna open up possibilities that haven't even dreamt about in our community, which could alter a lot of things. And you have a senior center, which we have a study now that pretty clearly says we are gonna need a senior center to accommodate the seniors if we're based on anything that's happening across our country. And I don't think there are any different many communities. We know they're coming. We gotta find a way to manage through them. And it doesn't seem easy right now, because it's not gonna be an easy management. One thing's for sure, we can't stick our head in the sand. That won't work. We did that with DPW. If DPW had been built when it should have been built, we wouldn't even be talking DPW today. That levy limit would have been released, and we would have been on to whatever. But it wasn't. It was delayed, and now we're, we're coming together all at this critical point. The, there's only three options available on there. The do-nothing option, and then the two relocation options, based on what Pioneer Valley said. It looks like they pretty, fairly thorough analysis on, with the amount of funds and time available on what the options could be. The do-nothing option is a valid option, but yet sooner or later, that option's gonna run out on us. It's either that, or we will not be serving the senior community in our, in our, in our town. I mean, either one of the two. But we know that that demographic is increasing. It's gonna be a very, very major demographic here in the next 15, 20 years. And they will either have services in our community, or they will go to other communities for these services. So we could do a great deal of disservice to our, to our seniors. If we do a consolidation of the schools, which is a possibility, then if we open up Glenbrook, and that opens up a developmental opportunity for a senior housing complex along with a senior center up there. But that's just hypothetical. But still, it poses a thing that we've not experienced recently. A large parcel of land, what is it, about 20 acres, Paul? About 20 acres of land that looks like, if it works in that direction, could become available for development.
You're talking about Glenbrook?
Mm-hmm. Right. Could become available. And that's never been, we've never saw that before. It's just something new that's gonna be coming at us. So we know they're out there. And the only thing we can do is manage the best we can with this day. Alex, I, you ought to know, I would love to see everyone in this community lay down on a master spreadsheet right in front of me. And I think we could put together a pretty good spreadsheet right now, but it's scary enough to know what we know without the spreadsheet. We know they're out there. The needs are so great. You know, we talked about the analysis by paralysis. You can almost get into that when you get to looking at big spreadsheets. But we've got things that are being, starting to be corrected. And these are three major pieces that we know are coming. We can't duck and hide from these. These are major pieces that are coming towards us. You may be able to defer the schools for another 10 years. I don't know. But we're gonna have to spend some major dollars if we do. And the community has to know that. If, because if things are wearing out, they're getting a point of replacement. DPW, as I've even told the schools, is an absolute must. We have got to do something with DPW. Whether, even if we stay there, and we've gotta have to sink many millions of dollars into the facility. It is worn out, it's fallen apart. So if we run out of excuses, we can no longer kick the can down the road. The senior center, we could go no action likely for five years. And we make a lot of people very unhappy. Your phased approach, Mark, absolutely 100% valid. If the planning is done, and we can say, there are certain things that we can phase, and then all of a sudden, you stop the phasing because you gotta do a big bubble, which you can't. If we, if we were redoing 100 comfort stations, we could phase them. I could do five a year over a 10-year program, or whatever the multiple is. And I've done that. And that's a good phasing program. Senior center may be a little bit more difficult with phasing because of the interrelationship of a lot of these pieces. They're talking about a 6,000-foot expansion. So at some point, that's gonna have to take place as a phase. I think the improvements you're talking about is what's been taking place there now. We haven't been expanding services. We've been renovating the building. We've been going and redoing the kitchen, and redoing the 60 rooms, which are beautiful, beautiful additions. But it hasn't expanded services per se. It hasn't changed usage or anything. It's just renovating the building. So I don't think, I don't think anybody wants, is gonna make a decision tonight, but we've been given the study. The senior community is definitely very involved with this study. The, the options are pretty straightforward out there. I think everybody knows now how the dealings of our local government work. Citizens partition can come in for design money, very easily. We could be paid, we could be faced with a citizen's partition for design money. So we can't really ignore the obvious things that are coming at us. We have got to collectively get on our management hats and do a whale of a job. I briefly talked with Stephen a little bit. I guess my concern is that none of us by profession are true planners. The people that can take these three major obstacles we've just talked about and somehow gel them together and say, okay, here's a master plan that looks like it's feasible for your community, especially taking the domino effect of Glenbrook, if that happens, you know, somebody can say, here's a roadmap that we think you could feasibly, possibly follow, that makes sense. And the people that we do have that may be qualified to do some of this planning, and they're so busy with their current activities, they can't, you know, like Stephen, you've got some background in it, but you're a town manager. You can't stop and go off into the planning mode. You still have to manage the town, and that's enough of a workload. So I think that's the main thing. I present back to the board is, not so much this decision, but knowing what we know, what is our next decision as a board? What direction do we want to go into to collectively solve many problems at one time instead of just one specific problem?
I think the next step that I, that I could see as reasonable would be in the, either the capital planning, or not the capital planning, in the budget process. The board could conceivably set aside some money in the FY16 budget to do some preliminary design or, you know, some sketching of renovations that could be made, just to kind of keep the conversation going. Not full design, but certainly a, a amount of money that can get you some architecture, some actual architectural work.
Right.
Beyond what we have here.
Yeah. And you're absolutely right. If we made a determination that we were gonna take option, what, two?
Yeah.
If we said we're gonna go option two, and that's the way we're committed, then the next obvious step is to put design money up.
Or retain an owner's project. I mean, really what PVPC is saying is, you hire the OPM, and then you start working, hiring the architects.
Obligate the money for the OPM.
We can certainly do some research in terms of what that would cost. We're going through that process right now with the article that was approved for the DPW.
Okay. Now, normal, normal, normal construction design would be 7%, but on reconstruction, is it, I'm not that super familiar with reconstruction.
Truth be told, we have an in-house architect. We have an on-call architect, not in-house, on-call architect engineering firm that, that we could, now they don't, we would have to pay them a separate purchase order for this work.
Right. Right.
But they could certainly start taking a look at the systems and the windows and start sketching out where they think a, you know, some kind of, really just a rendering of what, 6,000?
A start.
Yeah, a 6,000 square foot.
And none of this is wasted money.
Yeah, and truth be told, now that I say that out loud, a part of that was supposed to be a part of this report. And I don't know if it just didn't happen or if we just didn't get that far, but that would certainly be a next step.
Right.
So, that's something we'll consider as, I mean, we haven't finalized all the numbers for the budget proposal yet. And so, we have to look at if the money, if the money's available and what we'd have to give up to do that, but that's something we can certainly consider.
Well, we've given it some thought tonight, some consideration. Everybody's just got the report, so they need time to digest and I'm sure there'll be a lot of communication that takes place with people that you know in town. Yes, Mary?
Now, they didn't spend the full article money on this report. So, does that go back to the general fund?
It does.
And so, how much was spent and how much was appropriate?
15,000 or something like that, around 15,000.
15,000 and we had...
35,000.
35,000.
The articles, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, if you're figuring full cost is 4.6 million, so $280,000 would do the design, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, certainly the board, I mean, it can be done by a citizen's petition, but the board at the annual town meeting could put forward its own article to say, "Spend the remaining 20,000 to take it to, you know, figure out what you can, figure out what you can get for that sum of money in terms of looking at the building and renovations you'd make." I mean, it's, there are a lot of options out there.
But that would just be a pittance of what is really required to really get some documents coming back. You're gonna burn $28,000 pretty quick.
Right, but I think, like you said, it's, we have to balance. We have our, our building project that is the most pressing right now is the DPW facility and I think we want to take resources away from that.
Right, well, that's, that's in the first part of the design work, too. And this would be slipping into the first part of the design work.
Correct.
Okay, well, that gives us something to chew on and think about. That is the next logical step, is for us to embrace one, one of the options. And if we lock ourselves in on option two, then we're pretty well stuck on option two because the work that's done there can't be used on another option. Everybody willing to put it at rest and we'll bring it back up and maybe next meeting and have some more talk about it?
Or in the budget, through the budget process. And like I said, the decision, I think you're right, Richard, the decision to do nothing for now is not an unreasonable decision. They're gonna, they're gonna have a new kitchen.
Right.
The citizens have a new kitchen and then they're also gonna have a new walking trail that'll be another amenity for the seniors that's already been approved. So, there are investments being made in the building as we speak. I just, I just think we need to be pretty thoughtful on what we do here.
Right, okay. Well, let's, let's shelve it then for a wee bit. I don't want it to grow.
No, agreed. Too much work has gone into it.
Yeah.
By committed into private citizens.
Right, and I, and I think there's a point, and you and I have chatted, there's a point where this turns over and becomes a town project and not citizen-driven per se. And citizen inport's always welcome, but there's a point where we have to take ownership. All right. Let's, let's jump down and get to new business, either way, before we get into the goals. We got, we need a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
I need to close the special town meeting warrant for February 3, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? One opposed and three, Alex, you opposed?
Correct.
Yeah, one opposed and three, three affirm, or four affirmances. Okay, we got the special, assigned special town meeting warrant. That can be done now that we've done that. Community mitigation advisory committee. Stephen, you wanna give us a little bit of talk on that one?
Yeah, as you saw, we received, I received a letter from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission and under the gaming statute, there are, there is a kind of a statewide community mitigation or committee and then it's comprised of members of the assorted local community mitigation advisory committees. And the gaming commission requested that the town appoint a representative for the town, for the local, for this local mitigation advisory committee. The committee would basically, I'll read right from the statute. "May provide information, develop recommendations for the subcommittee," this is the statewide community mitigation subcommittee, "on community mitigation, subcommittee on community mitigation, on any issues related to the gambling, excuse me, the gaming establishment located in its region, including but not limited to issues of community mitigation, ways in which funds may be expended from the community mitigation funds, and the impact of the gaming establishments on the host and surrounding communities." Part of the gaming revenues that'll be collected by the state are gonna be set aside in this community mitigation fund. And so, these advisory committees are being impaneled to guide the state on the expenditure of those funds. There's a bunch of documents from the gaming commission that are in the packet. I don't, if you don't want, I don't really need to go through them in great detail, but includes the application that communities would use to apply to these funds, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Stephen, one of the documents had an early February date of having to submit projects by, which seems to me just off the wall.
It is.
And they, they tried to address it, but even the way it was dressed seemed to me as said, "But you gotta put something in, even if it's to say, 'We don't know what we're putting in, but we're putting something in as a placeholder to hold the, what, $100,000 or two.'" I mean, did you read that the same way?
I did. I, to be honest with you, I don't know. I mean, it's a statutory deadline and I think they're trying to comply with the statute, but they, they realize.
Even though everything happened.
Yeah, I mean, they acknowledge that, right. They acknowledge that the referendum really changed the dynamic of the timeline and the statutory deadline. But I truly think once we get through that, it'll be a normal operating, and, I mean, I should, I presume, and maybe I shouldn't presume, but obviously, because we have a surrounding community agreement, things we've already identified, for the town of Long Meadow, there's not a pressing need for us to seek funds under this just yet, but I, like I said, I presume that once these committees get going and they have their marching orders from the subcommittee, the statewide subcommittee, it'll be a lot clearer what the process is because I didn't, it didn't make any sense to me either. I don't know how to...
I mean, I read this as saying even communities with surrounding community agreements ought to be submitting those, those documents, or maybe even said especially those committees, those communities with surrounding, who are designated surrounding communities. And that, saying that we've got between now and literally 25 days from now to submit this thing seems very strange.
I think, actually, what it said was that you can put in something that just says "reserve."
A placeholder, right.
And then you can submit requests to try to tap into that $100,000 as this year goes on.
Right, but you have to submit that reserve and you gotta do it through one of these committees. You can't just, that's the way I read it.
I don't think, I don't think you have to go through the committee. I mean, I think it's just, I think it said, it said, "You can just check off reserve and you'll hold your $100,000." I mean, I think that's the thing that needs to be done by the beginning of February. I mean, is that, I mean, so we have to do something, but it's pretty minimal. I mean, is that, how you read it?
You look at the application, it's, it is pretty minimal. I mean, I think, application, yeah, I mean, it's naming and spouting, this is, yeah, this is pretty light and we can say just about any, I mean, we know an awful, we studied an awful lot of mitigation things that we could plug in here. This is not a big deal.
But it sounds like we need to plug something in there, as Alex said.
Well, I mean, the first step was...
No, no, you just, you have to check something off. They said that you didn't have to submit any projects by February.
But you gotta hold the money.
Right.
Reserve the money.
You can do water.
Yeah. Well, the more pressing thing is that we need to designate a representative by January 15.
We need to designate a representative to the statewide community.
To the local community.
To the local.
Right, which is a subcommittee of the...
This overall one.
Overall thing.
It's a subcommittee of the subcommittee.
That we need a community mitigation, local mitigation committee.
The local mitigation committee is going to be the eight surrounding communities of Springfield and then these other chamber of commerce and these other things, but it's gonna be representatives of the communities. And then that group, that local committee, will then designate somebody to be, to serve on the state subcommittee. It's like Life of Brian stuff now, when you drill down into it. But yeah, it's, I think it'll be, it'll straighten itself out. I shouldn't say it'll straighten itself out. I think once we get, once we get involved, it'll make a lot more sense.
Yeah, Stephen and I were talking earlier about this and I had some of the thoughts after we had our conversation. Because normally, you'd say, "Well, it'd be the town manager, it'd be the select board chair." And then I got to thinking, "Well, why would it be either of them? Why wouldn't it be somebody that's not gonna be out of office, that's not gonna move on to their jobs?" I mean, it could be anybody that the town would feel comfortable with having fit that position. Just, just as information, Stephen. I agree with what you said. You're the most logical person for this right now.
And not just town manager, not Stephen Crane.
Right, town manager, town manager position. But then I, then I got to thinking and I just offered consideration. It's something that a person's going to be involved with for several years. It's not just a one or two-year deal. It's gonna be many, many years. Yes, Mary?
Yeah, but I think having someone who has been involved, because right now, every, every five years is gonna be a different process. And right now, the next five years really pulls off the surrounding community agreement that was just negotiated. So, I think for continuity, I think it makes sense to have the town manager.
Okay, so you got a new town manager next week. Now, what are you gonna do?
Then you would, the same thing could happen to whether it's a select board person, whether it's a private individual who has, is working on a board, those people come and go also. I don't think you're, you're going to see a continuity in any of the people that you put in there.
Right.
And right now, I'm looking at continuity off of the work that was done.
We're looking at something, we have no idea what it is. We've never done it before.
No, but...
This is something new.
It is going to be data-driven, all of these negotiations, and it's also gonna be, a lot of it's gonna be our agreements.
Right, but it's gonna be new. This is the new stuff. This is the mitigation stuff. This is the new element.
I guess I disagree with that a little bit, Richard. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was looking this over, one of the things I recalled is that we went through, there's a whole bunch of other committees that you guys are on. I think I'm the one person who's not on a external committee. I was going to volunteer to be our representative.
You wanna be on committees?
On, on this regional mitigation committee.
All kinds of things. Well, that's what I mentioned to the board. And Stephen and I chatted, just, I think we need to think about, you know, what makes the most sense for our community? Is it a, is it a town manager? Is it a select board member? Is it a, one of the long-term residents of our community that's deeply involved with our community? I mean, I wished I knew.
The answer is it depends.
I guess, I guess that's the best answer, I think.
No, I don't agree with that. This is, this is, you're serving this commi...
You're stuttering.
No, you're serving on this committee to represent the interests of the town organization and the impact of the casino on the operations of the town. A private resident, as I just described for the citizen petition and the COA study, really cannot do that for the town. It has to be a town official.
Why? Not on, just not a mitigation committee?
What?
Not on the mitigation committee?
I, I guess it doesn't have to be, but it should be for, I mean, the sake of continuity. And I, I disagree with the statement that this is all new stuff. We went through, we went through, even though we ended up settling on an agreement that was focused on public safety and traffic, we looked at everything. So, this, the thought process that will go into being a part of this committee is exactly what we did from August of 2013 to April of 2014. So, it is not new. And I believe that under, if you look at the charter and what the town manager does as an appointed officer of the town, this fits squarely within those duties. And like I said, I agree with you. It's not, it's not about me, Stephen Crane, being on this thing. It's about, it should be a town manager. And if you have a new town manager next week, you're gonna hire somebody who's capable of doing this by virtue of being able to do all the other things that town managers do.
Yeah, I doubt that very much, but anyway, it sounds good. I mean, it really sounds, no, I think I wanted to elevate a little bit higher level discussion. I'm not gonna be emotionally attached to this. I was trying to say, what makes the best thing for the town? And I just offered it to the select board as a conversation element. Because I personally, right now, yes, you're the best person right now, day one. Two years from now, you may decide to leave and then we're sitting there and then there's, nobody has any idea what's been happening. And I, and our chances of getting another town manager that's been dealing on this mitigation is very slim. I fully recognize that. I'm trying to look down the road and say, "What's the best decision that can we make, not for today, but for five years down the road?" And that's all, Stephen. Yes, Mary?
I think what you have to realize is that the employees also have the institutional memory of what's going on in the process.
The employees are gonna be gone. They're gonna be gone.
Everyone's gonna be gone?
The people move, Marie.
Well, and so do private residents. They move. I mean, they, they drop out. They change. They retire to Florida. They, I think that...
Not enough of them.
I think that if you, wondering if we don't have the same town manager, you would still have the same CFO. You would still have the department heads that were very involved.
You're not gonna have any of the department heads we've got right now in five years.
In five years. And you can also look towards the attorney, Dave Martel, Brandon Moss.
Dave Martel is gonna be retired, I would imagine, in five years.
And then...
And then what?
Richard, let me, let me interject for a second. The reason why, and to some extent, we need to make the January 15 decision, because this is a pressing thing. And the board can always appoint somebody different down the line. I don't wanna get this bogged down in a, too far in the future-looking thing because we do need to do something pretty much at this meeting.
It's been a pretty calm meeting so far. We haven't got bogged down.
And I'm with you. And like I said, I'm not, and I, and not trying to turn this into an argument, all I'm saying is, the reason why I feel I personally am well-prepared to serve on this committee is because all the things I did through the process for the community, the surrounding community process and the mitigation and negotiations, I did because I'm the town manager, not because I was a casino expert. I only became expert in it because of the role I'm in. And that's where, that's the town manager's job, is to represent the town and if they're not familiar with something, to become familiar with it so they can adequately represent the town. I agree with you that there's nothing that says in here that it has to be the town manager. So, I guess what I would ask is, at least for now, you put me on there and if down the line, if I leave and you do get a new town manager and somebody else wants to do it, put him in. But I just, for the sake of our January 15 deadline, I would just keep it simple for now.
Richard?
How is this different from all these other committees that were, you know, like, Mark, you're on the PVCA board, right? I mean, like, why, why isn't this just like all these other committees?
The answer, I don't know, because I don't know what this committee, I mean, is this committee a, a committee of town executives or is it a committee of, you know, like, we've got our chairman of our planning commission appointed to the PVC, PVPC, you know, instead of the town manager, for example, which...
Technically the alternate, but yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, but, so the question is, you know, you kinda go with the flow, Yeah, right, yeah, but, so the question is, you know, you kind of go with the flow, Alex, of...
Right, no, I guess to me, it has the same flavor, you know, as these sort of, what I call, external boards, so.
I don't disagree with that, by the way. I don't think there's anything in here that says it isn't like PVPC or PVTA. So I mean, I don't, there's nothing in here that says that either. I just, I guess what I'm saying is, it's most efficient for me to do it now, but if the board wants to change it later, that's, that's up to you guys.
Yes, Paul? Two things. One is, if we need to make a decision by January 15th, I'm assuming we just got this information as a town.
December 12th, or it was mailed out, so we got it December 15th.
And I think I sent it out shortly after I got, I think I sent it out immediately, the letter, and then the stuff on the packet, yeah.
So, having it today, saying it's got to be voted on today, who the representative is, isn't necessarily to my liking. I believe it should be, in this particular case, it's either one of two people, and I don't agree it should be a citizen, but it either should be the chair of the select board or the town manager. If the chair doesn't want to do it, or whatever, then it should be the select board member or, a select board member or the town manager. Everything flows, so whether town managers are going to be here or select board members are going to be here, it really isn't the issue. The issue is, who do you want to represent the town on that particular board? So I think the choice is, it should be one of two folks.
Right, well, I was looking at it the same way you were, for the best continuity. That's what I was trying to figure, the best continuity.
Well, there's always going to be five select board members. Doesn't mean it's going to be the same five select board members.
But when they change, it could be...
I understand.
I don't know how much, any idea how much involvement there's going to be on this issue?
I don't even think they know, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think...
I don't even think the gaming commission knows. And if it turns out I'm the only appointed official on it, and it's all elected officials, then, then I'll obviously report that back and say, geez, I'm probably not the right person to be on here, because I don't need to go, I don't know where this meeting's going to be, but...
Isn't their first meeting in the Bahamas?
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I mean, I, like I said, I think for efficiency's sake, it's fine, but we can certainly make a change down the line. I guess we need a motion.
I guess I was going to say, I mean, this board could end up not accomplishing much. So when I'm, when I'm volunteering for it, it's the, with the understanding that it may not end up being very important, because it's a subcommittee of a subcommittee that then reports to the gaming commission. So, you know, who knows whether, you know, anything meaningful will happen.
Mark?
Yeah, only because we don't know what's going to happen with this thing. I'd like to suggest, and I'll make a motion, that we appoint Steven Crane as a, as our representative to the local community mitigation advisory committee to review that appointment in six months. That way, we'll see who the right makeup is, who the right people are. You may not meet in six months, or you may meet weekly in six months, but it'll give us a chance to review this and see where we stand. I don't know, everything's so delayed, I think this is...
Well, let me, I'll second this, we can have a discussion, because I have a question. So, then what does it matter? So if that's the thing, we're going to review it in six months, they might not meet in six months, why do we have to make that decision today, seeing that we just got this in the sense that it was in our packet, and you want to make a decision today without understanding...
Because it's a statutory requirement that we, according to the MGC, that we make a decision before, or make an appointment before January 15th. And we could say, we're not doing that. I don't know what the consequences are to that call. But for me, I mean, I'd pick six months, because I'm not sure if we did it for three months, we'd get enough information, but six months says, you know, we're going to find out what, what they do, and they'll hopefully hold more than one meeting, we'll find out what, what we think the appropriate person will be. That's my reason.
And I'm hoping that we'll look and see, we're about filling out that February 15th form. We might be the only town to do it, but, and so, you know, having the town manager on there, he's got all that data, he might be ready to jump and make something of this committee that, that if we just sit and wait and see if the committee's pulling together, this is an option for the ask again. And I'm always willing to put those papers out, so hopefully you'll not only be part of it, but maybe push along and get that ask in, and then get an assessment if the select board could really be more effective on that board, depending if it's more of a political board.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, my, my one concern is that this becomes, or could become, an all-encompassing, highly time-consuming activity, particularly with the part that says one person or more than one people are going to be, become members of this gaming policy advisory committee, which is a statewide thing, in which case you end up with, in this case, a part-time town manager who is spending more time on the gaming commission stuff than on being a town manager. And, and that, that does concern me, that possibility happening. I mean, our intent, and I think, Alex, that's what you're saying, why is this different from the PVTA thing I'm on? Because it meets five times a year for an hour, you know? And so it's not a, an all-encompassing, highly-involved kind of, kind of activity. And if this ends up that they're meeting at high frequency and it's taking a large amount of time, you know, how much time of the town managers do we want to spend on a single issue?
I'm with you on that, Mark. And I, obviously, I'm concerned about that too, except I don't need any more meetings in my life either. But I would just say that, let's, let me assess that as I get into it. I'm sure upfront, it will be a time commitment as the structure of this thing gets formed, but truthfully, if there are things that aren't covered by our surrounding community agreement that are impacts, we're going to want to be as heavily involved as possible so we have the best seat at the table to address those impacts through these mitigation funds.
Right, well, there's also a possibility too, Stephen, that we're entering something new, it's brand new, and that it may result in a reorganization of our structure. I mean, it may boil down to that, to the fact is that we have to have our town manager involved deeply in this issue to protect the interest of Long Metal each year. And that it is an overwhelming part of the, we don't know how, what it's going to take. That's, I guess, my point. We don't know what's going to happen on this, it's brand new.
I think their proposition, revisiting it in six months.
Other than the high-level committee, I'm sure it's going to be meeting in the Bahamas. Not the local committee. Local would be lucky if they can get the Denny's. So, all right, we have a motion, we've had discussion. Any more discussion?
The only thing, I can't find a single email that had that document in it from December. Was that sent out?
I thought I forwarded it...
Did you guys receive that in December? Because I didn't...
I don't recall when I got it, Paul, seriously.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, I looked through the whole thing to see if I had it in my trash.
I know this came in December 12th, so I guess, based with the holidays coming up, it was pretty quick.
I remember seeing something about it, but I'd have to go back.
I thought I had forwarded it to the board when I received the email attachment, the letter, but if I didn't, I apologize, I certainly didn't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall.
My only comment is, I'm not going to vote on something which I just have the information in the packet. We have, I think, Richard made a great point, that I don't think we need to rush in to vote to place somebody there without understanding the time commitment and what it's going to be. And if the state has a mandate that by January 15th, at that point in time, do they say you vote for someone, say you don't have them on there, or how does that work? I just, I just think it's, if, without understanding what the role and the responsibility is and the time consumption and all that, I think you made the point for me that it's, not having this information ahead of this evening and understanding, I still believe, I'll stop.
Yeah, I don't like it any more than anybody else. I think what's happening is the gaming commission, as we witnessed before, they just kind of played the game they wanted to play the game.
Well, the election thing messed all the time.
Yeah.
All these timelines are built into the statute, and, but there was no accommodation for, for them.
Right. And as I say, we're basically at the end of the food chain.
It's above our pay grade.
Yeah, and we're at the end of the food chain. So I guess, Paul, I will vote to at least assign somebody to the committee, since, I don't know what the consequences are of us not getting to January 15th. I wish I knew what that was, too. Whether it's a blow-off date or what the consequences are. Yes, Marie?
I would like to be, I don't want to be the last at the table, I'd prefer to be the first at the table in finding out what's going on and how this is forming. I think Mark's right, it might not happen a lot in the next three months, but in case they do start the discussions, I'm on Long Metal there listening. And I'm hoping that if it does, you will report each of the meetings, and that way, if it becomes really time-buried, then we will let us know even before six months.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it the vote?
Well, it does say there, if additional time is necessary, so we could go in and ask them for an extension. I don't know what the value is. I don't think we're going to find out anything. I don't think the information's available. The other thing, it says in making the appointment, we ask that the community avoid choosing someone that may have conflicts, which would otherwise impede their ability to serve on a local mitigation committee. And I, that sounds like a time commitment factor, but that's what it sounds like.
Could be, I don't know, political conflicts or, you know, business dealings with casino benders or something like that.
Well, it could be, yeah, it could be a professional, but conflicts will otherwise impede their ability, yeah, it could, it could be professional association. Okay, more to follow. Yeah, we're going to vote. I think we, I think it's prudent we vote. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three, two. And the motion was six months until we get in and find out what it is, Stephen. And then you can run for reelection. Okay.
Great, great transition to the next agenda item, Richard.
Yeah, what was it?
Isn't it set the annual town election?
Yeah, set the annual town election. You're right. Okay, and I guess we got something from Paul on that?
No, there's a document that I sent out from Catherine Ingram that just basically lays out, I mean, you got, the board is well-aware of the rules for setting the elections and everything, and everything else. There was some information in the packet on the bylaw and things like that, but this just says, if you set the date here, you need a primary on this day, a preliminary election on this date. So the thing I sent from Catherine Ingram just is basically lays out, if you do X, you need to do Y and Z as well.
Right. So the recommendation, Paul?
I was going to make a motion based on Catherine.
Go ahead.
I moved to set the annual town election to Tuesday, June 9th, 2015, with a potential primary date if needed on May 5th, 2015, 2015.
Is that right?
May 5th, 2015, for a primary if needed.
Yeah, and the annual town election?
June 9th, 2015.
Okay, okay.
No, no, that's what she had recommended, was June 9th, and May 5th is roughly four weeks prior to that and before the town meeting.
Second. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
No, I, I'm for. It was just slow.
Yeah, they were slow. All opposed again? Or all in favor? All opposed? No opposed? Okay. Yeah, okay, this other way, let's see, we got traffic calming policy. This, this is an item that, I guess, Marie and Alex, you've been working a little bit on, and this is an item that Stephen and I have talked about. This all, I guess, came to focus based on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission thing that we received back talking about Quintetuck Road and putting in the traffic, temporary traffic calming devices. It was brought to light that we did not, in fact, have a traffic calming policy within our community. And Stephen and I have chatted even this morning on this issue again, that's why we wanted to get it up, and I know, Marie, you'd shown interest, too. If, and I went back and checked my paperwork today for the legal opinions, and then, and then talked with you offline, but it looks like if we went to shut down, alter the road, et cetera, it goes back to that 41 policy, which basically said, if you have an official map, then it goes one direction, if you don't have an official map, it goes your planning commission. And then they make all of the certain terminations, and it would seem like this issue should have gone to them, and if they, if they read, which they did read the report, and the main report coming out of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was that we should set down now before we do anything and get a traffic calming policy, so that we have guidance to lead us in the future, instead of spontaneously dealing with one issue and then to another issue, and setting bad policies we morph along. I guess it's up to the, to the board how we want to move forward on this. The recommendations from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was that we did set a traffic calming policy. And that policy can be handled by a policy committee, or it could be spawned if we task the planning commission to work on it. Because there's a lot of examples of traffic calming policies in effect out there that they can bring down from the internet and put something together for Long Metal, I would say, in a fairly quick fashion.
I mean, certainly, you could task me with developing it, and I could go work with the planning commission, I just don't know about if the board can task, if the board can task the planning commission to do, and they're elected officials, too.
Right, right.
I don't want to get caught up in that, but certainly, they should be heavily involved in whatever we do. And, you know, I think it's, just to clarify, closing the road and abandoning the right-of-way are two different things. And the right-of-way abandonment is a planning commission issue. Simply putting up barriers to temporarily close the road was something that could, that the select board could decide. But I think we wanted to put this on here, as Richard just said, just to see, is there a next step on this? We have the model from Holyoke that was recommended by PVPC. Is that something the policy subcommittee wants to look at, or is that something you want me to take on and work with the planning commission and work with the traffic committee?
Right, I guess I misspoke when I said task the planning commission. You're absolutely correct, but I think they had, I think in the conversation, they've said that they would do it.
Right.
So I guess I spoke out of turn on that one. Marie?
Well, we've started it, but if this board wants it to go to the planning committee, just let us know. If not, we're hoping to get that done fairly soon, and if you recommend, we take it in front of the planning board before we bring it back. I mean, just let us know, there's other things we can move on to, if you don't want us to do the policy.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I guess my question is, what jurisdiction the planning committee has, planning commission has, short of road closure? I mean, in terms of, does the planning commission get involved when we install speed bumps, or when we, you know, all the intermediary or preliminary steps you might take, short of a road closure or something, you know, whatever the ultimate step may be, I don't think the planning commission is, got jurisdiction on any of that stuff. At least we've not used them in the past for putting up a four-way stop sign, which we did on Maple and Shaker, you know, putting in one-way street signs, putting, so why would we task them to develop a policy for, when they might have a responsibility for the last step in a policy we propose, but intermediate stuff, they have no activity for? So my, my suggestion or my support would be to task our policy subcommittee with the town manager to prepare a draft, traffic calming policy.
Yeah, you've got two items. The one was the, the issue on Quintetuck, and the other one is following Pioneer Valley's planning commission.
But, but if we have a, if we have a traffic calming policy, that will be the basis by which we'd address all the issues in town, which, by the way, includes the issue on Quintetuck.
Well, as I was saying, there are two issues. The one is the planning commission activity, and the other is having a policy, period. Because, you know, this, Chapter 41, Section 81I is the one that talks about the map. And when you have an official map, you deal one, and when you don't, then it goes to your planning commission. All the alterations, relocations, disconnects, and all that goes to the planning. And where the statutes get confusion is they mention every possible government consideration you have, whether you have the old community or not community, the county form of government. And it's all intermixed, and that's what Joel was bringing out, was a lot of the different clauses for the different forms of government. And it gets quite cloudy until you keep, until you boil down to the one that applies to you. So, you want to go ahead, Stephen? You want to work with Marie and them on this?
Sure. And we certainly will solicit the input of the planning commission, because it's one of those funny things where, like, if someone's building a new subdivision, the planning commission would have juris, would have responsibility for defining how the streets are going to look. So they do occasionally have some input on how the streets, like, through their site plan approval process. So we would want to get their input on this, but I agree with you, Mark, the policy would be adopted by the select board ultimately. So, yeah, that's fine with me, it's, if the policy subcommittee wants to do it.
Good point.
This is a select board policy we're trying to create, correct?
Right.
Or a town policy, which we're testing, right?
Right.
All right, so we have a policy subcommittee, you've already started working on it, you said, right, Marie? So I think the policy subcommittee should continue to work with that and bring it to the board.
They are, Paul. What we're trying to do is give more information to it. That's what we're trying to do, is bring everybody up to speed on what we know now that wasn't known when they started.
Bring her to speed.
Actually, Marie and the rest of the board. It's bring everybody up to speed on what we've, the more information we found about is the...
No, I'm just a little confused about why we would have the planning board involved with it, because it's a policy.
They're not involved with making the policy.
But I thought that's what we just spent a couple minutes talking about.
No, no, I corrected myself on that.
Right, their input on what makes a good policy, we should, we should get that, because Right, their input on what makes a good policy, we should get that because they deal with issues of, like I said, subdivision plans and things like that. Like when they look at the raised crosswalks that the shops are going to propose, those are things that people in the planning commission look at. So they have knowledge of, they have knowledge of traffic calming techniques through site plan review where they, they may or they may not, we don't do it a lot here, but they may have knowledge of traffic calming techniques. We should get their input, but you're absolutely right, this is a policy that the board is going to develop and adopt.
Okay, I just got confused there.
Yeah, they were recommending that we get the traffic calming policy made, period, for everybody to use.
Correct.
And it was a collective effort. The more people you can get at that table, the better the policy is going to be. Okay.
Alex, do you think you'll be able to get this to them by the next meeting? Do you think? Or should we say that by the wedding?
By the next meeting? Yeah, we could probably get a draft.
Okay.
I mean, if that's what we're doing, I mean...
Yeah.
Okay. So you want Marie and I to continue what we were doing, which was to get a draft here? Okay, we can do that.
You make a lot of noise up there, Mark. Okay, so we got the traffic calming policy out of the way. Okay, we're going to run back up to select board goals. The, since I find my file. We've had some conversation, excuse me, Mark, do you ever send them? We've had some conversations in the past where we weren't sure if we had goals or didn't have goals. You know, Paul mentioned we didn't vote on goals and it's true. We did not per se vote on the establishment goals. We voted as individual members on what, how we wanted the goals placed in a matrix and I placed them in a matrix. Now, we can say we didn't vote or we say we voted independently, but we voted actually to how the list we put together. And I made up the list again for everybody to say, refresh on where we sat on the things. I'll pass you out a copy, there's only a few now, it can go this way. I assume that we were in agreement when we moved forward with this list. If my assumption is wrong, then let's back up and throw the list out or modify it or vote on it or whatever you'd like to do. But this was how the grading actually came out with the lowest score being the highest priority need that we started out on. What I found out was interesting, when I looked down through the list today, actually the quint truck, which was down well towards the bottom, has now been taken care of. The Blint tennis court issue basically has been taken care of because they've allocated the money and then repaired the courts. The OPEB liability, actually we've changed policies this year and we have actually set a policy for OPEB liability. It doesn't take care of it in totality, but it did satisfy the objectives of a goal this year. Property owners zoning protection and bylaws. Marie, weren't you guys working on something on that too?
No, he has a special group.
That's the work we did that generated the articles from the town meeting.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
And we got three of the four things passed by town meeting.
Three of the four things were passed, so fairly successful on that.
And that effort will continue.
That effort will continue. So these items took, were down in the bottom and took care of themselves because they were just normal courses of business, but they were things that the board collectively thought were important. And if we went off the top of the list, we actually review and improve DPW operations. That's ongoing because we're going to be doing the operations evaluation and preliminary design. We did vote as a board to finally move the complex out of the floodplain. The DPW, these two were interrelated. The DPW facility and the review and improvement of DPW were very much interrelated and I think there were some people who weren't comfortable, but I guess I could blame myself for putting them together because they were so closely related. But both of those actions are moving forward. We talked about town manager performance last meeting or two meetings ago and I think we've got that item set in where it can sit right now until we get further guidance going on it. The way I'm seeing it, if we stick with what I made up, which was apparently non-voted on by the whole group, legislative outreach grants, funding sources, deputy town manager was a kind of a cumulative next step that we had and what we had talked about. And the bullet points that were put up during the presentation for that collectively was how do we increase our outreach for our community? Does it remain a duty of the town manager or do we specifically staff a position for this purpose? Do we staff a position or use contract services to establish this program? And how are other communities accomplishing this goal? These were kind of bullet points and conversation points that we tried to put out on the table. So I guess what I'd like to do before we move even any more forward with this list is get a feel for the board. Are we content that this is a list of valuable goals that we want to pursue for the rest of the year? We're six months into the year and we've got six more months to go under the current goal list. So I open the floor for discussion on this. Go ahead, Marie.
I like the list. I like the fact you're bringing out that we're going through it, especially now we're coming up to the budget season. And we're going to be, I mean, if we're really talking about funding legislative outreach or some way or looking down this, I think it's worth it to us, go through each of these one by one and seeing what we can do in the way of next step.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't see how legislative outreach is a, I'm going backwards. While you pointed out that some of these things have taken care of themselves, and I'll use those words because that's what she used, then they weren't select board goals.
They were, we took care of them, Paul.
No, well, let me put it this way. When you have a quint truck, which is ranked at the very bottom of three of the goals...
Right.
I'll go backwards, let me go backwards one more step. So while you have a list of items that the select board collectively, because obviously not everybody voted to have the quint truck down at third from the bottom, some of them had it, you know, third from the top or whatever.
Right.
And all these numbers were, they were assigned a value as best as could have been done with them and they were averaged out and that's my word. But they were put in a matrix and they, you know, here's where they scored and there was a ranking to them.
Right.
And it went from low to high, the high number was at the bottom. So when you look at things like the Blint tennis courts, which was six from the bottom and the quint truck, third from the bottom, then when you have, what we have is a list, this doesn't prioritize, and that's where I'm going with it. This isn't a prioritize goals, list of goals. These are a list of things that five board members said were important and it doesn't put any one ahead of the other other than the number rank and that was given to them because essentially the quint truck has been funded, but we haven't talked about a long-term capital plan. Blint tennis courts have been funded, but we haven't still talked about the long-term capital plan. So I agree that this is a list that was submitted by five members of the board and ranked. I would not say they're a list of prioritized goals. So it might be a list of goals in the general sense, but they're certainly not prioritized because I do think that some things do take much more precedence over others on that particular list.
Right, you're right there. It's a collective prioritization. It certainly is not the individualized prioritization by each member because there were some members that rated some items very, very low or so and they turned up high because maybe four members wanted it high and one member wanted it low. So that is an outfall.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the only flaw is that there are some things that are combined that I think when you, if you looked at them individually, they probably wouldn't be ranked as high. Like the fourth item there probably wouldn't be up there if we didn't combine four items into one or three items into one. That number might have been a lot lower. So my point is it's not prioritized by the vote of the board, it's prioritized by the assessment of values given to them and how they were assembled. So I don't have a problem with things that are on here. I would just say the board should prioritize it.
Well, certainly I'm counting. Okay, I forget how many, we had five for each and we had a town manager involved in that. So there actually was 25 that we started out with and I think we boiled them down to about 20. And we did do some consolidation because there was even the discussion on the town manager's participation on some of the goals. So there was a boil down. I don't, it doesn't matter how we move forward. I think the important thing is if we all agree as we move forward, if we can't agree, we likely won't get much more done on them. Because I've been drawing these items up and putting them on the agenda as they become the next and trying to get us to focus on them. But I don't care which one we focus on next, believe me. It's just that if we can all agree. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, two things. One is, you know, the things on this list are on the list, many of them have been on the list for a long time. And it really is a fisher cut bait for me in terms of, if we're not going to do anything about some of these things, let's stop talking about them. And, you know, the second comment I'd make is that there's five of us, there's a town manager and there's a large staff of people who have a lot to do, but nevertheless need to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time or multitask. And, you know, I guess I take, I take some level of concern that we're saying which one of these do we want to do next and not saying, look, these are all in our wheelhouse of things that we see want, need to be done or we'd like to get action done on. Why aren't we being able to address several of them at a time as opposed to saying which one do we want to do next? And I say that because I don't think, you know, just legislative outreach is something we do to the exclusion of everything else as a DPW facility isn't something we do. I mean, it's not done, we're working on it. So as we continue to work on that, we ought to be able to pick up some of these other areas. And so, you know, I think the process, as Paul said, was inexact at best, but nevertheless representative. I mean, you know, pick the top half and say we ought to be working on all of them to some degree or pick the top third or something. But I think we ought to be able to organize to do more than one thing at a time.
Go ahead, Marie.
Well, that's what I hope we were doing, that we were just going to go down the list and say what would be the next step in moving forward on it because I think, as you said, Mark, these have been on our lists every year and we have accomplished something on some of these and not on others, but there's nothing wrong with saying let's just get to the next step and move each project down the line. And some of them might cross the finish line faster than others, but let's just move forward on them.
That's fine, but I think in my opinion, the way we're going to do that is to set some more definitive or what some people sometimes call smart goals, which is a measurable goal with a definable timeline, you know, and to say legislative outreach grants, special funding sources, deputy, whatever, deputy town manager is very different than saying we're going to do this by this date in this way. And oh, by the way, the person who's going to do it is going to be Richard.
To set dates for this board would be impossible. It's just impossible.
But we're not so much setting dates for the board as we're setting dates that say, you know, and the date is always to me, the end of the fiscal year when the clock resets.
Yeah.
But to say by the end of the fiscal year, we want to have achieved this level, it sets a goal as opposed to say, gee, let's just make some progress on a long-term capital plan. We can always come back and say we did something, but did we do anything significant?
Well, we've had an item since 1987 we put to bed this year. That's a significant, the system has been there since 1987.
But we didn't put it to bed.
We did. We made a decision to move it out from where it's at and we took the first step in preliminary design. That is a decision. Next year, there'll be another goal to take it the next step. Mark, if we hadn't brought this in focus, we would have never even made that decision. The board has so much stuff going on. That's why we're not putting five things out at one time. Do you think we can absorb five things at one time?
Obviously I do. We're suggesting.
Well, then fine, pick the five. Let's go with them.
Well, can I?
You can.
I can, I don't need to.
Okay.
Okay.
But pick five, you guys want to pick five. It's your town.
So you want to just pick five, not just go down the list? So we should prioritize?
Let me correct, let me come back to one thing. The list is only in this order because this is how this board collectively voted for these items. This is not something that Rich screened up in his late hours. This is what you guys put down as your priorities and there's a matrix right there and exactly how everybody graded them. And then they happened to come out and said this was the highest priority project.
So are you looking for us to give the next step or smart goal to everything or to five items? What would you like us to do this meeting?
I would like the board to tell me what they would like to do as the next step moving forward.
On this list?
You're right. Maybe not even on this list, on any list. I have a list that I thought we had agreed on that we would move and even Paul said, he said basically these are items that we said were important. We can question the ranking, the validity of it, but anytime you've got five people, folks, there's going to be varying opinions on how we grade these. I mean, we know there's going to be varying opinions. And they're not tied in the individual like you're talking because this board is not, this board doesn't function like we were if we all worked inside of a corporate structure every day, 40 hours a week.
And that's my point exactly, Richard, is that we as a group of five are going to do very little on this. We're going to turn to the town manager and say, as the leader of a staff of 50, you know, we're hoping you and your staff make progress on these items in this priority and in this way and tell us when you need some help from us and tell us when to get out of the way, which some things have been better than the others. But the point being that, you know, Richard, you said to me, what, you know, what would we do and how do you pick five and how can you do five? You know, we've been very good at overloading some of the staff of 50 and underloading or not loading others of the staff of 50. And that's why we get all this hung up when the three people we've asked them to do everything say, you know, I can't do them all as opposed to the people sitting around there saying, I'm not really working on anything that's one of the select board or one of the town's top priorities. And I'm going to, you know, just crazy things to throw out, for example, is, you know, how do we know that Barry Jarvis couldn't take action on legislative outreach grants, special funding sources? Because we haven't asked that that be done because Barry's not, on the other hand, we got the DPW working on DPW facilities, working on streetlight purchases, working on, you know, on capital planning, working on the Blint tennis courts, you know, and to just throw more at them and say, you're not getting stuff done and not using all our resources to me seems that we're not doing a good job of making sure that the most can get done. And so that's, that gets back to some degree to my bias of previous years where we said, look, let's split this into categories and say, we're going to take the top things to have you do finances and we're going to take the top things to do with communications and we're going to take the top things to do with, you know, each of a different category so you can do more than one thing at once. So Marie, that's my answer of how we might do this.
So break it into categories and then from there try to pick the smart goal off each that's not overwhelming in our mind.
And ask our town manager to involve as many people as we can, like I said, and I don't need to pick up Barry.
No, but that's not how this works. You give me the overarching goals and it's my job, my responsibility to use whatever resources I have at my disposal to get them done and I report back to you how that's going. And that is what currently happens. And so it's not for the board to say, get Barry Jarvis working on legislative outreach. It's for me to say, I need to do more legislative outreach, how do I use the people that work for the town manager to do that? And that's what we do. I mean, I guess I hadn't really given this a lot of thought, but when Rich started going through the list and ticking off things that we've either, that either have been accomplished or are in the process of being accomplished, I actually said, wow, that's further along than I would have, than I really even thought of. And you can say that. You can say, you know, we're actually doing a lot of positive stuff towards these goals that we identified. It wouldn't kill you to say that. And I think, like the thing about, I'm going to use the streetlights one. The streetlight is, we are stuck essentially because we are kind of in now a conflict with the utility company. The resolution of that conflict is completely outside of my control, outside of the town's control.
See, I don't agree with that. And I didn't pick that one, but now that you picked it, we ought to discuss that one because I...
But I've reported on this to you, Mark. And this is where, you've made the comment about managing down and that's what ends up happening. That's what's happening right now. The board's not looking at the overarching goals of the town. It's like, what tasks can we develop? And I'm going to go back to Dave Martell's opinion letter that says this is not really how this is supposed to go. And so I think some of the goals were appropriate and we've been gaining ground on them. But to go back to get it done by this date, that's fine, but you also have to accept when I report back, listen, it's just not going to happen by this date because the utility companies aren't going to cooperate with us and we may need to hire a lawyer and fight with them at the Department of Public Utilities. And that could take two years.
But what you didn't say is come back to us and say, if you want to make progress on your schedule, we need to hire a lawyer and go to the DPUC.
But we're not there yet. What I've reported to you, but I've reported you on what the status is, but that's not the status.
Right, right. Well, so the question is, are we stuck or are we not stuck?
But that's, all I'm saying to you is that as an example of stamping a deadline, doesn't, some can do that when it's, like if it's, if it creates a new policy for traffic calming and put a deadline on it, yeah. The inputs for that are 100% within town organizations' control. We can do that. But when there's things where the inputs aren't within our control, a deadline, and then a deadline isn't always achievable.
But Stephen, let's go back to the streetlight ones because the issue for me is if there had been a deadline, instead of saying, well, we're moving, but it's slow to that, you said, look, we're going to be way off the deadline unless you as a select board take action, authorize me to hire an attorney and do an end run around the utility involved here, we've got to go to the DPUC. And oh, by the way, George Woodbury's got a lot of things to do and he's not available. So if you want something to do, to be done in this timeline, we've got to do something different because the normal approach, the historical approach or the approach I'd otherwise be taking isn't going to do this. But without having given you that deadline, you're making progress, it's just much slower. The problem is, we may say, you know, another year goes by, we've got another budget year coming up that we're going to pay another $275,000 for renting streetlights that we shouldn't be needing to do. My perspective is this is going to be the 50 year or 60 year, we've talked about it. If we had done the end run around them five years ago, we'd be $275,000 to the positives this year. Now, that's not your issue, it's our issue, but it's, I think it reflects our ability, you know, my comments about, about by putting a deadline, it lets you understand what we consider are the urgency. And very honestly, if you come back and say, and we say as a collective group, forget about it, we're not going to hire, now you got, you got the answer. But right now, we've got you going and us with one presumption, and me at least going with another presumption, and it's disconnected.
It's you going. The board is not really moving in the same direction, Mark. And now I think, you know, and here's what I would say. It's further down the road than it's ever been. And that doesn't factor into the discussion of the goals at all. And that's, and we talked about this before, one of my review conversations, it's always, well, we haven't done this, haven't done this yet, you know, there's no acknowledgement of, we are, sometimes you have to stop and acknowledge what you're accomplishing for goals as a board, as a town, as an organizational structure, and I just, we're just not doing that. So we don't get the opportunity to have an honest discussion about, about what are we accomplishing? Do we need to re, because we've accomplished certain things, should we go back and rescore the whole list? I mean, it's, this is what, you know, this is what organizations do. You tackle one, you see, you can take a moment to say, do we need to reprioritize, given the fact that, you know, some of these things have dropped off the list? Should we, should we plug in new ones? And then if we plug in new ones, would that create a new order of prioritization?
Well, the streetlights is an interesting one, because Mr. Gold's priority was, that was his seventh priority, and it's number eight on the list. So this one is almost falling in, exactly in line with the priority you established. I mean, it's, it's there, fairly reflective of where we wanted it. And you're right, there's been, there's been action taking place on this prior to this. But this was the point where we got to the point where we said, we want board action on these. We want action to take place at these points. That was the purpose. You could say these weren't even goals, these were action things. They say, look, guys, we got to make action on this. We got to do something, make a decision on these elements when we hit this point. That way, it becomes a focal, or a narrow or focused discussion. That was the only purpose in having this list. And you're, it's number eight, and yours is number seven, so it's coming up pretty quick. Now, we can, we can, we've got some things effectively done, we can get rid of them and reprioritize the whole list.
Richard?
Yeah.
I was just, you know, off of my input, you, because you were talking about sort of how far along we are. I guess I would, I don't really share some of the descriptions that you've made about our progress on some of these goals. So for example, the review and improve DPW operations.
It started. And that's what we wanted, was to make a decision.
Yeah. I mean, I haven't seen that. And to me, what we voted on at the town meeting to authorize funding for a design of the DPW facility is very different from reviewing, improving DPW operations.
They're both in there together, Alex.
I, to me, that's very different, because what we had let the previous year at town meeting was to bring in an outside consultant to review the operations solely. That was not addressed. I mean, the point, all I'm trying to make is, those are two different ideas.
They are two different things.
And so, I mean, I guess, all I'm, and we don't have to get into every single point that you made, I mean, but, you know, to me.
There's points we made, though. Remind me, we made, it's not just Rich made. We made.
No, 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 I was just referring to how you characterize progress, that's all. So, because I don't, I don't want my silence to be seen as an endorsement, yep, we've got number one checked off. Because I feel like we haven't really done much at all on that, or at least I haven't seen anything.
Well, maybe by the end of the year, we'll just dazzle the daylights out of you. I hope we can, because I think, I think there's things that are in motion that hopefully will become reality. They haven't happened yet. Stephen, you and I've talked about it.
I, I will acknowledge that on the operational side, the, we've done some things that don't immediately look like operational improvements, but I do believe that they will yield operational improvements, staff changes, but we've also been shorthanded, you know, these are all just realities of the organization that we have. So I will, I do think the DPW facility, we, as Rich noted, we took a big step. Again, that's, that's a new high watermark for that issue that's been kicking around since 1987. And I think that that's commendable. The operations, we work at it every day, but it, you know, it is the other thing. I think the board has, it seems to me that what constitutes a success or what constitutes progress is not really evident to me, anyway. I'll speak for myself. I don't always know when something is seen by the board collectively as a success or progress.
Which is review and improve, and that's part of the operations evaluation that is going to take place as part of the schematic design process. There, that's two pieces of that process, what we authorized at the town meeting.
Yeah. The programming study in an architectural design process is a review of the, of the organization.
I think we're talking about two different ideas.
Well, programming study is exactly what you're after.
No, actually, the way I, this, this, what we authorize is to look at how the facility can serve the operations. I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is sort of a more, you know, day-to-day oper, I mean, and I've seen these types of studies before, a management consultant comes in and talks to people, you know, what were our areas of weakness, you know? How should we reorganize? Who's not doing their job, you know? Who should be moved to a different place? I don't think that's what we authorized.
That's what's going to, that'll be part of the programming study.
All right.
That's, that's under the programming study, part of the design work for the setup. And that's what we, that's what we've said all along, is that we're, that's going to be part of it. That's why we put both of them together when I said we clicked off both of them, because when we wrote the design statement, we said, because you're going to likely go, well, we're not sure, you'll likely have the Collins Center do it, because they seem to be one of the reputable firms that can do it.
That guy's not there anymore that he went to do.
Oh, he isn't?
He went to a different office.
Well, wherever he's at, search him out.
I did get his contact.
And Stephen, is, we've got to set up the, what do they call it, the OPM, and then that'll be started, a part of the design process. And when that's finished, I was hoping it'd be finished by spring town meeting. It's not going, we're not going to be able to make it. I was hoping that we would be in a position to be able to go back with a, another design element at that point. But we're not going to make that point. It'll be fall town meeting before the next bubble comes up on, on DPW. At that point, there'd be a lot of questions.
See, to me, you know, you know, going to Mark's point again, I'm just focusing on this, because this is our number one priority. You know, what are these definable goals? Would be to get us to a point where, when we approve projects at spring town meeting, we're ready to go with them. That, I mean, because that was the issue with the Blinn tennis courts.
Design work is not shovel-ready.
No, no, the point is that we can, we don't have to do additional work in order to put it out to bid.
But design work is a different animal. Because it, sometimes, design work takes six months to get to the next step in it. It's not a shovel-ready. It's not like you say you're going to repave the road, and you just got a contract and paved the road.
I understand.
This one, here's the A and E, and then the A and E's going to have three or four month study period, where they come down with the interviews and evaluate.
I guess, I think, I guess what I'm getting at is, to get us to a point where, in our department, this spring, rather, if we vote on something, those bids, solicitations can go out right then, as opposed to waiting until August. I mean, to me, that would be a goal for that organization to move toward.
That would be.
So that, so that we don't face the kind of issues that we face at the tennis court. To me, that would be something that we could measure, we could look at, you know, it would, you know.
Right, like, like, projects that had been completed, authorized in spring town meeting, we could also look at those.
That, that goal takes a reasonable expectation on the people that are behind the scenes putting that together, that that is going to be funded. There has to be a reasonable expectation, because they're going to use money now to do preliminary design, to have that project ready to go when you give them the money. So there has, and we talked about that before with this board, there has to be some reasonable expectation that money is going to come if this is done. And then it works like clockwork, Alex. And it does.
Right, right.
And what you do, we're, we're actually doing, likely, the best we can do is, we're authorizing preliminary design money, which we should be doing, instead of saying, here's $6 million, we're saying, here's your $300,000. Do all of this, identify all the parameters, then you come back, and we'll give you the next chunk of money. So we're doing it in a very programmatic fashion.
Wait, are you talking about the DPW facility?
Anything, anything you're designing and building.
I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, so, like, at the Blinn tennis courts, you know, we'd been working on that for years.
Yeah.
Right?
And it changed every year.
And, you know, and then we had the go, and then we had, so all this work that could have been done during the winter was being done during this critical period when asphalt, you know, could be laid, you know? And so by the time we solicited bids in August, it was too quick. You know, why, why can't we be in a place so that when we say go on the floor of town, spring town meeting, that we can put those things out to bid immediately, so that during summer, people are working on it, instead of people sitting in an office working on it?
Let me hit them on this. You can't do that in design. It does not work. I wished it did, but it doesn't.
I know. It's funny, I remember bringing this up before, and you said it could.
I said it can, but you have to have parameters in place. You must give it, people an idea, say, next year, we're looking at $700,000 coming into your division for planning. What projects do you think you want to push forward? And they say, this, this, and this. And we say, oh, preliminarily, we say, okay, we think that we'll prove that, then they start design work. And then they're ready when you give them the money. But it has to have a reasonable expectation that there's going to be money, or that division is going to spend all, they're going to spend money just doing stuff that may never fly. It may never get over.
Sorry.
Now, you can go. My blood pressure's going down now.
But I think what Alex is trying to do here is to, right now, we say, improve, review, DPW, and they do things, and we're not happy, we said we wanted this. But if we can actually decide on a smart goal, and we decide, this is the exact smart goals, we want to know what projects are going to be able to go July 1st. And if the town manager says DPW will be able to do these, but not these, and will communicate with us, then that is a smart goal, and the communications has existed, and we're moving forward on DPW improved operations. So I think Alex asking for something concrete can actually be helpful, because then we can see where the improvement is. But the whole board has to decide that that is, okay, a smart goal we're looking for. And someone else might say, well, we want all these different things, but let's pick one smart goal, and we move for it, and the communication occurs on it. And then if you say, well, the Blinn tennis courts cannot be up and running July 1st because of this, 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 and this, then it's communicated, but yet we know the goal is to be shovel-ready when the money's ready. Now, maybe, Richard, you're telling me this is, I'm not thinking straight, because I'm not a DPW person, but I think at least picking out a concrete goal is worthwhile for us to do, even on DPW improvement.
You can do anything you want, as long as there's a reasonable expectation that the money will be there, because they are going to expend money doing planning.
Right.
And you have to understand that. And that's when a healthy process is in place, is when the right hand knows what the left hand is doing.
And to some extent, while I understand the concerns about project timing, sometimes it is unwise to expend money on design planning if you don't know you're going to get the money to do the project. There are times where, and I'm hoping that the changes we've made in our capital planning process, that you haven't observed firsthand, but the board will when the plan is presented during the budget, will demonstrate that we are, that's a, that's a concrete step that I have implemented to do exactly what you're saying, Alex, which is make sure the projects are more ready to go out. I mean, it is a lot of work to, we have, it is a lot of work to get the projects out the door, and, you know, like I said, Converse, or Dwight Road drainage, we'll present the projects that we did with the boiler, the Williams Middle School boiler, the Dwight Road drainage, you know, water main, I mean, a lot of work got done this summer, and got approved at spring town meeting, got out to bid, contracts were signed behind Center School there, the Colton Place, the Paul's House, Paul's House was torn up all summer long. That was approved at spring town.
The road in front of his house.
The road in front of his house. That was approved at spring town meeting. And again, Blinn got, you know, we made a choice to have, to spend a little extra time peer reviewing that project, because we don't build tennis courts every day, and that costs a little bit of time, and I don't regret doing that, because we wanted, I'd rather have the project right for a 25-year deal, I want to get it right. But, you know, we are trying to make specific steps that I hope will improve that administratively.
Then you should love that for a smart goal, because be sure to get in there.
Can we, can we focus back? Maybe, I know there's been a lot of talk, can we get something constructive for as far as the direction we want to go? I mean, I, we have a list. Do we want to reprioritize the list? How would the board like to proceed? Or throw it out and start over, or just say, keep going? Or just keep going. We've, we've had some accomplishments already. At least we've got some things started, and they should rather head next year, so we see the energy to keep the board going forward.
Well, I mean, you know, one, what is it, one, two, three, four, fifth, long-term capital plan, 20 years. I don't think we've touched that. I mean, you know, as, as a means for accomplishing that, put that on the next agenda, so we can start to.
Okay, well, let me get some consensus. Do you want to go pick, pick your favorites and push them on the agenda?
Well, the reality is that if you look at number four and number seven, they're conglomerates of more than, of several items. So if you took them separately, because legislative outreach and a deputy town manager have nothing in common, as far as that is concerned.
No, it was the whole concept, Paul, of put them in there, you know, if you're going to do outreach, how are you going to do it? So the deputy town manager is put as a possible outreach person. That was a discussion item, that's all. It wasn't the fact that that was an action.
So you're saying, so the descriptors, grant special funding sources, deputy town manager, legislative outreach was the fourth highest?
Right. Well, here were some of the descriptors that went, went with that. How do we increase the outreach for the community, because it remains to the duty town manager to specify staff positions for. It was like a decision, it was, these were just points to refocus us on the discussion, for discussion, that's all.
Okay.
They weren't intended as, as direct drivers.
So my question on number four is, do we want to, some people have actual special committees or task force to do that. Some people hire a, a couple of hours of a deputy town manager or assistant, bring in a consultant for it. Do we want to have a subcommittee that sits down and works on grants?
Well, subcommittees, usually, subcommittees is a good way to kill something.
Grant writing is a town manager function under the charter.
I guess the point that I had, Marie, how many grants are available in the state of Massachusetts that we're not aware of?
They're all supposed to be coming through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Okay. I will repeat the same question. Okay? How many grants are available that we don't know about, or that we're not actively working on?
I'm going to answer your question with a question. How many of them, how many grants have we applied for?
That's the second part.
The only, the only thing I've read is, I know our police chief has applied for one recently, that was in the minutes, or the notes we got, and the fire chief applied for one sometime, but I, we don't, whatever the number is, our percentage must be pretty darn low.
And then I read the paper where this town gets $1.8 million grants, and the paper was filled in again, and it makes me wonder, I said, are we not eligible, or are we not those, do we not have a staff person?
Some other town gets one.
Some other towns, yes. And that's been my concern all along. It's not the fact that we're doing anything wrong, it's the fact is, are we, are we really investing in the future of our community and getting somebody that is, that is, that's all we're thinking is grants. Grants and two or three other jobs, and what they're steering.
But I think you have to analyze the grants, because if the grants, you know, some grants are based on demographics, that you're going to get a grant in Holyoke, you're never going to get one.
Absolutely, Paul, but we don't, we don't know that. We don't know that.
Well, I think we do.
We do more than you think. I mean, it's great, I mean, there isn't a grant tree that just, you know, fruit hangs off of, and you just go grab it when you feel like you want to do something.
There is, well, there is a website in the state that has every grant listed available to communities.
It does, but it doesn't take too long waiting through it, and you realize they're pretty specific. And we may not be doing what that grant wants to fund. And now, do we, it's like, you know, this whole walk and chew gum thing, you know, where we don't have grant writers. We don't have a grant writer whose job is to mine grants and apply for them in a town that's not a position that we have.
Why not?
Because it just, it doesn't exist in the organization.
Okay. But there is, there's no reason why we don't have it.
Well, the funding is the reason why.
Okay. But do you ever recognize it as a major need? I mean, sometimes grants.
Honestly, no. I think what ends up happening is, when you realize the department heads are aware of the grants that they can pursue, usually annually, and they do. The fire chief applies for several grants every single year. The police department applies for grants. This regional communication center is a grant. That project is really, is essentially a grant. We got the Green Communities grant, you know, we do get them from time to time, but the demographics are an issue. And programmatically, you know, there's tons of grants out there for housing programs. We don't operate housing programs.
There's tons of programs for stimulus that we didn't get, because we didn't have anything in there.
Right.
And, you know, we talked about legislative outreach. When's the last time we visited our senator's office and said, hey, what kind of programs you got? And I want to, you know, these are the things.
Last fall.
No, it was last summer.
Yeah, but what came of it? That there's no follow-up? I'm talking about a dedicated person that wants to do this, that that's their job to trace this down and keep it going. That's all. And I've seen it work fantastic. I mean, grants makes the world run around.
So the question is, you're saying the select board asking for funding for a new employee?
No. This was just an item that we said, legislative outreach, grants, special funding sources, deputy town manager. It was a whole discussion. And if we're happy that we're reaching all the grants that are available, and we're content with where we've been and where we're going, then we can drop the issue off and say, we had the discussion, decided to pass it by. I don't think we're touching all of our grants. I would be surprised to find out. I know we're getting some good ones. But, you know, they also do throw those at DPW pretty heavy, and the police department's pretty heavy. There's grants going every year that are taken right to their desktops. And I'm talking about the more of the legislative outreach that part, because I think we should have a very active legislative outreach program from our community, because we're not, we're being underrepresented by Chapter 90, because we need to be up there fighting to change the formulation and prove to them that we're impacted by commuter traffic in this town that other towns are not hit by. And yet, we're not doing it. So we're never going to change legislation unless we start beating on the doors and showing them the facts and getting in their face. Yes, Marie?
Well, the issue is how we're going to go about that. Are we going to go about that with the town employee? Are we going to do that with a committee of various committees? I mean, exactly what you were talking about, I was doing when I went to two of the regional meetings. And I talked about the Chapter 90 and the concerns about that to the various legislative leaders. Now, the issue is, should we be doing that as a select board? Should we be bringing them in front of us? Or should we be having a task force? What is the best way for us to reach out and get more grants and funding?
That's a discussion for this room. I mean, I don't think there's no best way. It's the fact is, you've got to stick with it, and it's got to be reinforced.
Yeah.
And it has, you have to make these calls. Those that make these calls, there's no secrets when you see the grants are being given in this part of the region. I mean, there's some heavy-duty grants going to some towns. And they may be economic or demographic-based. There could be that, but we don't know, Paul.
I don't believe at all that having a dedicated grant writer is going to enhance the grants. You have a state rep and a state senator that represent this town. That's part of their job, is to bring back things to their district. Now, if you want to advocate to them as terms of legislative outreach, I think that's great. I think anybody outside of those two folks, no one's going to listen to you.
Well?
Because a representative from Springfield or Holyoke or whoever is fighting for their own Chapter 90 money for their own community. And I think, for years, I've heard that there's so many grants out there, and I do think that our folks, if there's, are going out there and seeking them. And that's how they're getting them. I just think that, I think we have this, I think we have a dream that there's a huge amount of grants that are out there for the plucking. We just got to pluck them. And I don't think that, I don't think that's what's available to the town of Long Meadow. And I think most of them are, you see, the schools get a great number of grants, because education is probably the, because it's the biggest part of the budget in the town and the state, it's probably the biggest budget in terms of grants. And I think you see the schools doing a really good job with them, because they're there, but they, most of them are routine. So, and there's one, there's some every so often that come through, but most of them are routine, that they file for every year. I just, I think we've, and I've heard this discussion for nine years on the board, and I don't think there's anything that proves that a grant writer is going to make that big of a difference.
I've never heard the discussion, but maybe, maybe I didn't listen. The grant writers do make differences. Dedicated grant writers can, they can spin the words, they get into the nomenclature, they can bring in a lot of money. We've never had one, so we haven't seen the benefits. I personally have seen the benefits of it in my professional career. I can guarantee you, professional grant writers make their salary 10 times over, because they wire into the system and they ferret out money. It may be not applicable here. I'm talking about a different environment, so.
Richard?
Yes, sir.
I mean, one of the things that seems true to me is that some of the people that are going to best know how to apply for a grant are the people that are handling the town department that relates to the subject matter of that grant. You know, you're already talking about, hear me out, you're already talking about police, a police chief, a fire chief. Now, what they may need also to sort of augment their ability to get a grant is, as you say, somebody who can speak the language. You know? And I guess the thing that would be useful for us to know is to find out from department heads through the town manager, you know, what are the possibilities? Would they be assisted by a grant writer? And that person might not necessarily have to be a full-time town employee. You can get, people are grant writers, they're independent contractors, they can do it on a job-by-job basis. That could end up costing not that much. You know, the other thing you could do is to rate department heads and town manager by, how many grant applications, you know, did they apply for? Or how successful were they in getting? I mean, it seems to me, if you make that part of the job, and, you know, then you're sort of moving forward on that goal in a kind of, in a policy kind of way, which is what we're here for.
The problem is, if you don't walk the walk, you can't talk the talk. And there's pots of money in Boston that this town will never know exists unless they ferret them out. There's no fairy godmother that's coming and telling you where all these things of money are at. You have to get in the loop and start to ask questions.
So in other words, it's got to be somebody's responsibility to seek it.
Yeah, there has to be seekers.
And the question is, who are those seekers? And I guess what I'm suggesting is, maybe in some cases, it's exactly the way we're doing it. You know, a police chief pursues police money. A fire chief pursues fire money. But maybe those, you know, people can be augmented with additional help.
But that's just two funds, Alex. I'm talking about a lot of developmental money.
But, Richard, I honestly think, the view of grant, and I haven't spent a lot of time on it, but the department heads do look for grants. And we certainly haven't turned over every stone. I won't say we haven't. And we probably have left grant money on the table. But there's, you know, there's, I'm going to use an anecdote to illustrate why it's challenging to dedicate a lot of time to that. Two words: police dog. Brought forward a grant, an opportunity for funding to enhance operations of the police department, and the board didn't want to do it, because it was going to have additional expenses beyond, that was covered by the cost of the grant. That happens all the time with grants. Like the water and sewer stuff. They'll give you money to upgrade your water and sewer system if you join the MWRA. They're not going, there aren't grants out there to offset overtime costs.
No.
For towns like us, there aren't grants out there to buy new police cars. They don't, I mean, it's not, it's got to be, if there's a grant for, like in a town that has an industrial park, say, East Long Meadow, say that, I don't know what was there, but the mill building that's across from American Saw. I can easily see them getting a P Wed grant for a million bucks to upgrade the site, because they know that the tax-paying corporate entity is going to, either they need to do that money to get the thing ready. But there's another, there's another shoe to drop after that. A residential community, we don't have that shoe. So it's not, it's not a lack of attention to it. It's just, I think, especially the departments that have been around for a long time, which is a lot of them, have been to that well so many times and come away empty-handed, that it's hard to stay motivated to chase grants when you know that the game is really the same every single year.
Okay, well, forget grants for the time being. That is a small piece. How about legislative outreach? That's where the real money's at.
That's correct.
That's where the big bucks are at. What are we doing for legislative outreach? When's the last time you were in Boston?
Last fall.
On a legislative outreach for our community?
I mean, that's, legislative outreach is not necessarily being in Boston. It's more having regular contacts.
When was the last time that you did legislative outreach and brought home bacon?
Brought home, I don't know, I haven't. I mean, we've requested letters that go with our grant applications. Is that, that is legislative. I also, in my professional career, have been a lobbyist and done legislative outreach.
Right. And you know that's where the money's at?
Not really as much as it used to be.
Okay, well, then let's stop the discussion.
I mean, it's more of a policy style. I mean, it's, you're right in that, and the other thing is, at the state level, there just isn't the type of earmarking and stuff that we get at the federal level.
If you stay nestled into the city limits of Long Meadow, you're not going to get special funds. You're not going to do it. I'm sorry. There's no fairy godmother that's going to come rescue you. We've got to fight harder than anybody else to get special attention, because we do not have some of the facts that, like Paul was talking, we don't have the demographic support that we need. We have to fight harder. And that's what I'm saying. And maybe I'm totally wrong. I'm just telling you what I would do if I was in charge of the whole thing. I would have a very strong legislative outreach branch, because I think there's money that we're not getting, and we have to fight harder for it. But I know once it gets started, it flows easier, too, because they become much more aware of our project. Who's got, there's no, I bet there's no community close to us that can show demonstrated needs like we have on our infrastructure, because they're getting more money. They're getting special dollars. They're getting their roads rebuilt by federal dollars and state dollars. And we sit here strangled. Yeah, Marie?
I think, well, two issues. One, with the grants, the question would be, would the departments find benefit in having a grant assistant writer, like Alex says, part-time? Second, on legislative outreach, I really think it depends on this board, because when I've gone out and I've seen it, other select boards around the state actually have their legislative people in front of them. They have knowledge on what's coming up, and they discuss with their senator and their representative what's coming up and what they want to have put into it. It's, a lot of it is elected officials' relationships. Now, when it came to Senator Candares, we saw the water bill that was coming up, and we made a list, and we gave them a list of what our needs are in the next 10 to 20 years. And they considered that when they wrote the bill that came out. So it's not something that you're going to work on now, that you're going to see immediate money this session. But as you work forward and we develop those relationships, hopefully, we will start to see more money coming back. Because, Richard, I agree with you. We haven't gotten money because we haven't asked for it. When Senator Candares found out we were looking to possibly buy a ladder truck, she says, well, we were never informed. That was something we could have considered on budget bills going forward. We do that for other towns. So I think we have to, as a board, start having more open discussions, bring in before us and have them discuss. And we have to know what the ask is. We have to be able to say, well, these are our needs right now. This is what we need you to consider in the future. And like, one of the things I think that we should, and we should be looking into the far future, like a local option gas tax. Should we have a local option liquor tax that's serving taxes on top of the meals tax? So we should try to bring forward toward it. But I think that's where we, as a board, have to start doing more.
I agree with you 100%. But it's hard.
Yeah.
For people that are part-time to do legislative outreach, because it's hard to keep the contacts going, and the amount of feedback that has to go. And that's why it's more, it's not better, but it's a heavier part of the town manager's job, to be able to keep that contact base going. Where it's more difficult on you and I, because, for instance, you know, I mean, everybody except me is full-time working every day. What time do they have to go to Boston? Seriously, I mean, I understand that we can do, we can work these things, too, but it's a culture change, I think, is what I'm after, Marie. But I know we're never going to get it unless we ask for it and fight for it.
Richard, I guess that's where I was thinking. I mean, if we start making that as part of the expectations throughout the organization, you know, of grants and legislative outreach, make that an item in your performance plan. I mean, you know, everybody in the federal government has got a performance plan. There are specific things. And, you know, frankly, if it's not in your performance plan, you're probably not going to be doing it, because you're not going to be judged on it.
Right.
You know? So, I mean, to me, that would be, you know, part of the, part of the culture change that you're talking about.
And that was really the essence of that item. Legislative outreach, grants, funding specialists, deputy town manager, all those things were mixed together. How do we do it? That was just bullets in there for discussion. How do we increase our outreach? First of all, I think we have to agree that we need to increase it. If we agree with that, we'll find a solution. I mean, the first thing is just admitting that we could do better. And I agree. I think that's the board. The board has to make that decision, that we want to see more outreach. And if we tell, task the town manager, I mean, the town manager has X amount of duties that have to be done to keep this town functional. And there is a finite point where you can't keep someone on other duties unless you put FTE with them to help facilitate those duties. And, you know, legislative outreach does take time. As you well know, Marie, you spent time with Senator Candares. It takes time. And it takes follow-to. And it's not, you can't just jump in one day and jump out. It's a dedicated effort. You know, you've got to return the phone calls. You've got to keep a relationship. Now, we're getting a new senator in here, so it's a good time for us to maybe redress how we deal with our elected officials, because it's a brand-new opportunity. And this is a fantastic opportunity, because we have an individual from our community as mayor-senator.
They was a great town out in East, I can't remember which one. And they, twice a year, have their state senator and representative in front of a joint meeting with the school committee.
We did that all the time, Marie. We always had Brian Ash come in front, or before Brian, you know, the state representative and state senators. We always invited them once a year, at least, to come talk to us.
But I don't want them to come talk to us. I want us to have organized what our ask is, so we can say, these are our concerns in town. And so they, it should be a listening session for them. I mean, the last time we heard, this was passed, this was passed. I don't need to hear about divorce law. What it really needs to be is more geared towards what the needs of the town are. And I'd like to see us to have that, maybe, on a more consistent basis, as the select board.
And another thing well worth noting, it's going to take a couple of years to see the rewards.
Yes.
Because Mike on his TIP program, he's starting to see rewards from TIP. But then, oh, he's got projects in there, and they're getting up on priority. So they're starting to get funding. Cooley is a TIP project. And if they never got it in there, they would have never got it funded. And I guess you've got Converse, and there's some other stuff, and it's slowly working its way through the system. But if you don't get it in there, it's never going to get up on priority. And he has to attend a certain amount of conferences and do a little smooching to move these things, or at least let people know we're still really interested in it. But it's a combined effort. It's a whole change in doing business. It can't be just Long Meadow is Long Meadow, because we have to, we have to do a fair amount of outreach to bring awareness to Long Meadow. It's awful easy for them to overlook us, because we're not, we're not squawking. You know what I mean? I think it's pretty easy to be overlooked. Anyway, it was a point of discussion. Anyway, it was a point of discussion, that's, that's the reason it was in there. We got 12 minutes before the lights go out. I don't know if we had any consensus on what we want to do on these goals. Bring it back on the next agenda. That'll, that's a, that would, we can do that pretty easy. So can everybody please give us some thought between now and then? So that maybe we can readdress that issue and move forward at that point? Let's see, I think that was the last item on the agenda. We got subcommittee reports. Anything from subcommittees?
Actually, we have one that we need to have on the agenda, our debt policy for board approval. Submission to Board Paul Fisterzak has it. He had some minor adjustments and if he has the updated version, that he can get to have the town manager at whatever meeting you put in.
Next, do you want it next week?
Whenever you want it.
It's ready for...
Okay.
And the other thing is, we just talked about, there was a meeting of the finance subcommittee before this meeting. We just talked about setting up a schedule so we can do some preliminary review of the[1668.88]